Call to order, Committee of the Meeting, Committee of the Home Meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. First item on the agenda, roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Nancy. Beck.
Here.
Peeper. Wolf.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Chanzet. Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi. Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Sarum.
Here.
Vogelsinger. Nine.
Okay. Item number two, reminder for everyone to please speak directly into the microphone so BATV can pick it up for those listening from the outside. Item three, items removed, added, or changed. We do have one request to put up to item four A, recognition for black shift crew for exemplary service. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, can I?
Got a motion.
Yeah, can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by Solfa, second by Uwer for an addition of four A to the agenda. So we will jump right into four A.
Voice vote.
Oh, voice vote, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Anybody in the public want to address the council for an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we will jump to item four A and I will turn it over to Chief.
I just wanted the record to reflect that Alderman Peeper arrived at 7:02.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thanks for allowing us to extend yesterday's recognitions to today's council, or cow meeting, I'm sorry, from the council meeting, and got a better audience, this is wonderful, so I appreciate that. Just as a quick background for all of you, Deputy Chief Lucas, we recognized him yesterday for, this is for the same, for the same incident, this involved a call that encompassed our black shift, and today happens to be black shift, so it was, it was a little easier to convince them to come down when they're working, and I kind of, I ask them very kindly to come down and be recognized. As you know, firemen are usually very humble, this is part of their responses and daily things, but every once in a while, we get one of those calls that just needs to be recognized, and one of those calls is a career-type call, and that happens to be a childbirth. So I'm very honored here to recognize some of the crew that is working today, who took a, a, a very important role in assisting one of our citizens at her time of need in, in an emergency childbirth. To give you a little bit of background, on May 30th, our black shift crew was, was dispatched for a call that occurred at a neighboring residence. The neighboring residence was right across the street from our east side fire station number one, and at the time, our east side fire station was already committed to other calls, so it required the, the response of our station two from the west side. Because there would be a slight delay, as you all know, crossing town, especially at certain times of day, as we talked about yesterday, Deputy Chief Lucas quickly responded over there, but also Battalion Chief Mark Swinski, who was also at Station One at the time, quickly, quickly got in his battalion car, bringing the necessary, what we call jump bag or first aid supplies over, and arrived on the scene just in time to assist Deputy Chief Lucas in actually delivering the baby. So they, they, as they say, arrived in the nick of time, as it were. So we wanted to recognize them for that, so Mark, if you would come forward. Shyly, but you know, that was how I kind of have to direct them, "Come on down." So, but anyway, this is for Mark Swinski, the City of Batavia Fire Department recognizes Battalion Chief Mark Swinski for his quick actions on May 30th, 2023, when he was dispatched to a neighboring residence for a personal labor. Mark immediately drove over to the residence just in time to assist Deputy Chief Lucas with the birth of that child, and obviously, the family is grateful, but we also want to recognize Mark for, we call it, an unusual but very stressful call that turned out with, you know, good, with a very good outcome, so thank you very much, Mark, appreciate it.
On behalf of the members of the City Council, community, and general, we have a certificate of recognition to give to Chief Swinski from the city, acknowledging his actions on May 30th, 2023. I think this well illustrates the quality of individuals that we have serving the community of Batavia and the fire department, and to have the ability to do what they did and then be able to make sure that the person gets proper medical treatment going forward, I think speaks well for the Tri-City Ambulance Program with which we are an active participant in, and something that all the citizens of Batavia should be very pleased that we have at the service to them. So Chief, I'd like to present that to you, and thank you on behalf of people of Batavia for an outstanding job, for making this a memorable moment and a kind of a happy occurrence at the end of the day as we sit here and recognize you, so thank you again.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
And as Chief Swinski most aptly pointed out, and Deputy Chief Lucas said yesterday, it's a team effort, and we're proud of our team, and we want to make sure that they're acknowledged properly. So the next one is for Brian D. Nicola, paramedic D. Nicola, if you'd come down. Come on down. The City of Batavia Department wants to recognize firefighter/paramedic Brian D. Nicola for his actions on May 30th, 2023, when he was dispatched. Brian came across town, is part of the Engine Company, Engine Two. Engine Two is a paramedic first responding unit, and Brian was a paramedic on that unit, and was able to, again, assist the two chiefs in not only with the care and care of the new baby, but the comfort and care of the mother herself, so we appreciate that, Brian. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the City Council and members of the community, we want to present you the certificate of recognition for your actions on May 30th, 2023. And I'd like to further say that you guys did an outstanding job, and it really speaks well for this community to be able to, I'll say boast what we have going in the fire department and the paramedic service, and that this is a reoccurring thing, that the fire department has saved lives and continues to provide lives or deliver lives to this earth on both ends of the spectrum, and certainly, I think it speaks well to what Batavia's all about, that there's things that the city should be very proud of, it's the fire department and the paramedic program. So thank you.
I should acknowledge that we have other people who are part of the crew who couldn't be here tonight, Kip Minor was another part of that engine crew, and he could not be here tonight, but we do have one of our ambulance crew here tonight, Bianca Gisaldo is here tonight, come on down, Bianca. She's already turning red, and I'll try not to embarrass her too much here, but Bianca was on the ambulance, one of the ambulances, we do dispatch two ambulances that because we do have two patients, don't we, Bianca? And one of the, you know, obviously, it's nice to have someone like Bianca, especially in this type of situation, childbirth and things, and I'll embarrass her a little bit, being a new mother and things like that, it really was very helpful, and we were grateful to have her on duty, and Bianca has been on a number of very challenging calls, unfortunately, this one had a very good outcome, so thanks to not only Bianca, but the whole crew, so for your assistance, Bianca, we'd like to recognize you, and again, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I think the paramedic program is something in Batavia that we're very proud of and very, very fortunate to have at our utilization, and the fact that, you know, we got one ambulance on each side of town that's paramedic-equipped, so we try to keep the town covered, and if those are busy, we, our partnership with Geneva-St. Charles, so we can bring other ambulances in immediately to get them into space, and so the way the Tri-City ambulance works, if five ambulances are busy, the last one may not be busy, we put it at the west side Geneva Station, which then centralizes it between Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, and there have been a number of times when we've had to use that ambulance. So Bianca, thank you for all you do and continue to do, but on this particular occasion, thank you for really doing a wondrous thing and providing this earth with another able-bodied citizen to grow up and be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, Bianca was assisted with a couple other paramedics who could not be here today, Kyle Sickles and Jake Canada. We do have, though, Francisco Rocha here. Needs a little encouragement, "Come on down." Francisco is actually one of our part-timers and rather new to the department, so I'm sure this was a first for you and your career, and, and a rememberable one that you will remember for the rest of your career, and we, again, appreciate all your assistance and support as we do all the part-time paid-on calls who come out and assist us on a regular basis, so thank you very much. This is the last one for tonight.
Francisco, on behalf of the City of Batavia, the City Council, and the community, I just want to present to you the, for your actions on May 30th, 2023, and as a newly assigned person to the Batavia Fire Department, you've gotten yourself into a master's class here real quick, and what you should or should do in a medical emergency like this, so keep up the great work, and we'll look forward to many, many more years of service on your fire and we wish you the best, so we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you did that night, so thank you very much.
Just once again, I want to acknowledge the crews, I appreciate not only the black shift, but all the personnel from all three shifts, they're color-coded, black, red, gold, but they're, as you know, on duty 24/7, 365, and it's really nice to be able to acknowledge them for something that's, you know, a very good, good thing, very nice, and, and they have gone through a lot of adversity, and we've seen more tragic accidents than we've ever seen this year in Batavia, and these crews have risen to those occasions, they've dealt with them, and while it's difficult to acknowledge them for that, it is wonderful to be acknowledged, you know, acknowledge them for something that's really this amazing, so I appreciate your time and cooperation, thank you all, thank you, guys.
For the record, Alderman Vogelsinger arrived at 7:07. Next item, number five, initial land use proposal for McKee Properties, 1,000 McKee Street, Pulte Home Company LLC applicant. Drew, run with it.
Thank you, Alderman Sarum. Yes, tonight's agenda item is what we call the initial land use proposal. This is a voluntary process that applicants can go through to receive feedback on a proposed development for a property, and specifically a development that requires or would require amendment to the comprehensive plan or the zoning map. Pulte is seeking to reclassify the property, that is, the former furnace factory or Siemens site at 1,000 McKee, they are looking to change the designation on that property from MU mixed-use to R1H, single-family residential high-density, which would be to facilitate a single-family development of approximately 70 units on the site. This, the initial land use proposal is designed to be, provide some general commentary or initial commentary on the property, identify areas of major concerns, and not, prior to a submit of the formal zoning application. It's not designed necessarily to provide a comprehensive review of details of the site, but instead, it's the focus on the broader concept of the change in use, change in density, and so forth. This, the furnace site is, consists of two properties, both along McKee Street. The south property was originally developed with the furnace electric factory in the 30s, and was active as a industrial site until about 1996, or I should say, 1996 was when Siemens acquired the property, it was about the year 2000 when activity ended in terms of use of the property for industrial use. There was a proposal for townhomes on the north parcel at one point in 2002. After that process, in 2005, the city conducted a visioning process with neighbors that resulted in a position statement that was attached to the report that envisioned a mix of uses on the property, including retail, office, and single-family, as well as detached single-family and detached single-family. The property, as you, the council may know, did go through several stages of demolition and cleanup. The initial building was demolished around 2009 with an NFR, or no further remediation letter being issued in 2013. The pads and foundations of the properties were not removed until, I believe it was 2015, with a second note for remediation letter being issued after the completion of that work in 2019. In terms of history as well, the south property was zoned originally as I-2, which is the equivalent of the GI General Industrial District today. The north parcel was zoned light industrial, however, that really, only other than a parking lot, was never developed. In 2009, the property was temporarily rezoned to R1, which was a single-family residential district, equivalent to the R1L district today, and in 2010, with the adoption of the zoning code, it was designated for MU mixed-use. The, the applicant will be up here shortly to present the proposal and go through that in more detail, but in order, in discussing the, the existing zoning, the MU district does not allow presently single-family residential, so the, that is one of the reasons that they would need to request a change in zoning to facilitate single-family. The MU district does allow more dense development, basically encouraging multifamily residential with, with loft units in terms of residential, but then also some level of first-floor commercial with those, with development of those properties. I did note in the staff report, the first property that we had that was a new development in the MU district was the Landings on the west side of town, and in that particular project, there was a reduction or waiver of several of the mixed-use requirements to facilitate that development. In terms of the applications that would be required for this, the project would require both changes to the land use map, the zoning map, they're, based on the proposal, they would probably also be asking for a planned development to allow for certain relief from the code, as well as design review for the overall site design, as well as for the overall layout of the property. As I mentioned, there was the 2005 position statement, while it's not formally adopted by the city council, it did represent the consensus of the council at the time, and that plan did specify single-family along the east side of Van Norwick with a gradation of higher densities as the property developed to the west. The statement did say that the north property was preferred to remain undeveloped, which probably would require the transfer of development rights in order to allow that to happen. The comprehensive plan has few references to, or a few references to the Siemens site or the furnace site specifically, there was discussion of a redevelopment plan, which was then followed by a TIF eligibility study in 2007. There is specific commentary regarding consideration of the development of the site with the surrounding property context, and there was suggestions of, to soften that impact of development and traffic control through the, through the process of developing that property. In the staff report, I do identify several different land use policies, as well as housing policies, that would be pertinent through a discussion of the development of the property. There is language addressing the need for higher density in and near the downtown area, there's statements about diversity of housing types, providing a range of prices and styles for all segments of the community, there's language specific to mixed-use development regarding how to handle, or with large-scale redevelopment of mixed-use, saying to provide a mixture of housing in those situations, as well as language about redeveloping obsolete industrial sites with mixed-use development compatible with the neighborhood. There is also language in those sections about extending the street pattern through, through industrial sites or redevelopment sites, as well as creating community gathering spaces. Again, in the memo, I do go through the housing elements as well, again, similar language of encouraging different housing styles, accommodating different needs within the community, as well as language about preventing commercial encroachment within residential neighborhoods as well. And as I noted in the staff report as well, some of these statements, especially with diversity of housing, are, also can be viewed as well holistically for the whole community, not necessarily for a specific development, too. With the proposal, the applicant has been in contact with the Batavia School District regarding the required land cash, that is, a land or cash donation based on the number of students being generated on a property or overall population being generated on a project. The school district has indicated that they're receptive to the idea of receiving a land parcel that would be a connecting location to the HC Storm School property, and that would allow them to reconfigure their proposed entrances and parking areas to try and facilitate through the site and their site, a, a potential redesign of those pickup and loading areas to help facilitate traffic issues in the area. The applicant has also been in contact with the Park District since the time of the writing of this memo, the Park District has indicated their willingness to take cash in lieu of land for their land donation, or land cash donation. The property or the proposal, identifying in the, the land use map, that existing properties are between two different ranges of residential primarily, that's between 2 to 3.5, 3.5 to 20 units per acre, as well as a categorization of 3.5 to 5.2 units per acre. While the gross net density is lower, the net density of the proposal is about 5 units to the acre, net density is when you remove the roadways from the consideration of the land area involved. There are, I did put in the report two example blocks, those are not necessarily meant to be comprehensive or totally reflective of the whole area, but two of those blocks that were sampled, one was at 4.61 units to the acre, that's an area bounded by McKee, Mallory, Houston, and Harrison. Another block, which is McKee Republic, Van Norwick, Illinois, was at about 3.03 units to the acre. In regards to utility capacity for consideration of this project, the city did, or has set aside a large amount of sanitary capacity at, for the site, and in memo, I did note it's 4.26 population equivalent, which is the equivalent of 120 attached residences, and that can be more with apartments, but that is also, that, just to be clear, because the memo made it a little, sound a little more ambiguous, but there's also a separate number for the adjoining property to the west of about 374, so just to make clear that that, that doesn't, you know, the number set aside in that report is a larger number for both properties. In regards to, and one other thing I just wanted to mention, is that with the mixed-use district, there is not a specified density limit, nor is there, other than setbacks, floor area, building envelope, and things of that sort, that's really what drives what possibly could be developed there. Again, the mixed-use district envisioned potentially attached residential by way of either townhomes, condominiums, apartments, and things of that sort, so that's where the applicant has noted that this would be a reduction in the proposed density that would be allowed for this site. The, you know, from a staff's perspective, staff is supportive of single-family use of this location, as I mentioned, you know, there was envision of additional density on the site, so that's where, you know, the site could handle that, but staff does believe that single-family would also have the least amount of impact on the surrounding properties as well. There is, or the applicant has been working on a tree preservation plan, staff, as I noted in the report, is concerned about the overall removal of trees on the site, but believe that in some level, with, through the engineering process, some of those trees could be identified as being reasonably, being able to be preserved. So in terms of the process tonight, the, again, the initial land use proposal process is intended to just discuss the favorability of the change in use, it also is looking at broader topics such as vehicle connections, or vehicle access, pedestrian connections, and so forth are considered in the scope of the initial land use proposal. Again, it's not necessarily to be focused on lot-specific or site-specific details, because those would be part of a formal development process, you know, once pursued at a later date. There would also, for the education of the audience, too, if the applicant does move ahead, there would be other opportunities for public comment in terms of formal public hearings, the initial land use proposal only requires notice to, mail notice to property owners within 500 feet, a formal zoning application would require posting of signs, publication in the newspaper, as well as the similar mailing as well. So the, with the process tonight, the initial land use proposal is set up to have 10 minutes for the applicant to make a presentation, and questions and answers being asked of the committee of the applicant, followed by 10 minutes of staff follow-up, along with time for the committee to ask questions of staff, then the, the typical process is to allow for 30 minutes of public comment, as I noted in the report, you may consider extending that if you deem it necessary, and then after that public commentary is done, the commission, or excuse me, committee can discuss the proposed change in use and provide general commentary to the applicant, however, no vote or straw poll is to be done as part of this process, so that would be tonight's process.
Great, thanks. You said the developer wanted to present, start?
Good evening. Get this up real quick. All right, you may have heard some of this before, but bear with me.
Matt, can I just pause for a moment and ask you to share your screen, we do have one.
Oh, look at that.
Who is online.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Think that would be.
The zoom is right there in the middle, yep.
Put that in Excel first, just for fun, but. Perfect, did it. If we need Excel, it's open, so, okay. My name is Matt Rowley, I am the Director of Land Entitlements at Pulte Homes, we are the contract purchaser of the site, we're excited to be here and share our vision for this property and the future of the City of Batavia. By way of introduction, Pulte Home Company is, has been building homes since the 1950s, we came to Chicagoland in the 1970s, and we're perennially. We came to Chicagoland in the 1970s, and we're perennially on the top three builders in the United States and also in Chicagoland. We have the distinction of having the top-selling community in Chicagoland each of the last six years, and we are currently selling in 18 different communities within Chicagoland, one of them being right here. We focus our efforts on building in great schools in great locations, which is one of the reasons why we're back in Batavia. As you all know, the site in Batavia, Winding Creek, was approved last year. It's 163 homes. We have 99 Meadow Series and 64 Estates. These are traditional two-story homes, ranging from 1,600 square foot ranch up to 3,200 square foot. We grand opened in December of '22, and we've already sold 47 of those homes, and we're rolling into phase two. You've seen earth moving and pipe going in, so we can get that paved this year. The site that we're looking at tonight is the 17.7 acres of vacant land. If you, just to orient you, looking north of the site is Storm Elementary School, which we'll talk about later. Just north of that is the Lowerland of Batavia Apartments. It's 253 units. Northwest of that, just to note, the Memorial Park of the Batavia Park District. Looking west of the site, we do have some vacant land immediately next to us, single-family, and then followed by the Green Meadows Apartments, 150 units beyond that. Just south of the site is kind of a mixed industrial area. And east of the site, we have single-family and fraternal lodges. The site is the current home, as Drew stated, the Siemens factory, for over 62 years. It's been vacant buildings or open space for the last 23 years. The cleanup remediation of this property is complete, and the state has issued two no-further remediation letters. Once Pulte got under contract, we've also reviewed the information. It has been cleared by our corporate counsel, and it meets our national standards for residential Quickly, your comprehensive plan. Just wanted to note that it is, you know, set to be mixed-use, but I did also want to highlight on this slide that you can't see is the comp plan's assessment of the density near us. So if you think of the five units per acre that we're proposing on this site, that is sort of right in between, if you think of, you know, land use and zoning, right in between the 3.5 to 5 to our east and the 8 to 15 that's west of us. Rolling right into the zoning, the property was zoned industrial from 1971 to 2010, when the city downgraded the zoning to mixed-use to match the comprehensive plan. The mixed-use zoning does allow four-story buildings that are 50 feet high, and it does not have a residential density regulation. If you kind of do the math and lay out the site, it does equate to a floor area ratio of around three, and we're asking for deviation on this site for 0.71, just for, by way of example. Our proposal further downgrades the zoning to a less intense residential zoning, that of R1H, which is the logical extension of the existing zoning off to our east. We're proposing two-story homes that are 26 feet tall, as measured by your code, with a density of five units per acre, and I mentioned the floor area ratio. Quickly into the site plan, if I can. I always talk about drainage first, probably because I'm a civil engineer, but also because that dictates how we lay out just about every site we look at. The site drains today from north to south. Staff has mentioned an existing substandard drainage condition that exists along our south property line, which we'll be able to address as part of the project. A majority of the site pre-2015 was impervious concrete pavement and buildings, and we are proposing today full detention that meets the new Kane County stormwater standards for rainfall. This is a belt-and-suspenders approach that was, that we were asked to do by city staff, but will be a net benefit to the area. All three of these basins will be native, native-planted, and they're in optimal locations for runoff from the site. Also provides for some amazing homes that back up to the, to the on-site amenity. Access to the site, we laid this out at the direction of staff so that no sidewalks, I'm sorry, no, there will be sidewalks, so that no driveways are on McKee, and so everything low is internally or on Van Norwick. We have planned for future roadway extensions off to our west, on the south side of McKee, and also a stub into that site. So if that site were ever to develop in this same logical manner, they would be set up to succeed. We will be widening McKee and extending the bike lane across the frontage of our property. And then we are proposing sidewalks along all public roads, including McKeeve and Norwick, and then a pedestrian connection to our southwest that goes off the screen down at the bottom to Wilson. And I also skipped over the Outlet A, in between Lot 4 and 5, will be a driveway connection that will be dedicating to the Batavia School District. We've had many meetings with them to discuss kind of how our two sites would interact in the future when they do make some improvements, so we plan that in. That's the location that they desire, and their letter was included in your report tonight. We're proposing, and I guess it's worth mentioning, the initial land plan that we submitted to staff last year did include townhomes on the site, and since that time, we've kind of whittled down the density on the site, went back to single-family, honestly as a direct response to buyer comments that we're getting at Winding Creek. I shared this in the letter, but that is legit comments that we're getting from buyers. They love Winding Creek, they want to live there, they love the homes, but they really love living closer to downtown. You know, when you're out on the Randall Road corridor, it's just not the same feeling that they've become accustomed to. So we wanted to find a way to fit that need or fulfill that need on this site. So we're down to the 70 single-family lots here that we talked about. These are 50-foot-wide lots. We meet all of the bulk regulations of the R1H district except for two. That's the floor area ratio that I discussed. And then the maximum garage width, your code sets a maximum width of the garage at 50% of the total frontage. With this product being 35 feet wide, we're very close to the 50%, depending on how you measure it. I was measuring the garage door, and it's, I think staff takes that as the full garage width, so we would need a deviation from that requirement as well. Moving to the home product, which is different from what we are currently building at Winding Creek. We have four distinct floor plans, each accompanied by five elevations. The floor plans range in size from 2,400 square feet up to 3,200 square feet. They are three-bedroom and four-bedroom minimum, with two and a half baths, two-car garage, two parking spots in the driveway. They do have full basement standard and plenty of optionality for buyers to select from. Key example would be the sunroom that I'll show you on the next slide, or two more slides. The elevations that we submitted, this is the boardwalk model photo from our Kildare Crossing project up north. All of our front elevations that we've selected for this site have a protruding front porch or entryway, essentially so the garage door ends up being stepped back. Now, it's not in your code anymore, but we meet it this time. These are modern, oh, sorry, I skipped ahead. The elevations are a mix of masonry, wainscot, and vinyl siding. The additional architecture features include decorative columns, shutters, window grids, and architectural brackets, freeze boards, and the 12-inch roof overhang. The home interiors briefly, you can see the kitchen up in the upper right, and we do, we have the living area on the, I'm sorry, upper left, then upper right. But I did want to specifically call out the sunroom on the bottom left of the screen, and then our Pulte Planning Center on the bottom right. So the Pulte Planning Center is that area where I would send my junior high kid to do his homework. It's just off the kitchen, so I can keep an eye on him while he's doing his homework, but I don't have to see all the clutter, and we still get to eat dinner on the kitchen All buyers, same with Winding Creek, visit our design center to personally pick their upgrades and finishes that fit their needs and their budget. And I think that's it. We are very excited about the opportunity here and the future of fulfilling this need in the city of Batavia. I appreciate any comments you have this evening. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments before we turn it over to staff? Yes.
Yeah, I would like to share some numbers here, because I've had some people ask me about this. I support this project specifically because it is a single-family home project. And right now, in the city of Batavia, the numbers are as follows when it comes to apartment complexes. In Batavia, right now, we have 1,448 living units in apartments. Of those, 328 are on the east side, and 1,120 are on the west side. So there's a pretty much of a, I would call it, an unfair balance of apartments already surrounding this particular area. And, you know, the thing that I'm concerned about is, is that our ambulance calls on the fire department are just skyrocketing for a variety of reasons. But to add more density into the west side, wherein this is already a challenging moment, I think would be a bad mistake on part of the city of Batavia.
Anybody else? Abby? Yes?
Will the pricing for these homes be similar to that of Winding Creek?
Yes. The, right now, the average sales price of homes in Winding Creek, the two different series, we're in the mid-fives and mid-sixes. This site will be in the low-sixes, so right in between those two.
Alderman, people?
So you mentioned you had considered townhomes in the past, and based on responses for folks who wanted to go into the Winding Creek subdivision, of wanting to be closer to downtown, you switched to an all-home model. Just to make sure I have that connection correct, that people who wanted the single-family homes in Winding Creek, but closer to downtown was the reasoning?
Yes.
Was there any consideration for folks who would want townhomes, who understandably wouldn't be looking at Winding Creek because it doesn't have townhomes, possibly being missed from that equation effectively?
Yes, if they weren't interested in, at Winding Creek, then they're not part of that conversation. We do a pretty in-depth internal market study, shows that there is a market for single-family homes here that will be well-served by the project.
Drew, you'd said 10 minutes for staff discussion, no?
Right, so the next component would be 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes of time for staff follow-up or questions to staff of the committee. I think the only question that came up during Matt's presentation was, he had mentioned that the garage requirement, how the code is written, the garage for the 50% rule is based on the total width of the garage space itself and not to the doors. So that's where there may be a need for zoning relief, if, depending on the site plan, or depending on the floor plan proposed on some of these sites. We did a similar request for relief with Winding Creek. I believe it's up to 54% in that particular property.
And just wanted the record to reflect that Alderman Chansett has joined us remotely.
I have a question for staff. This is something I often harp on a little bit, not so much here yet, because we haven't had a major development, but just in my personal life, I guess. Given that most of the new infrastructure here, the new roads, street, you know, the new streets, the new lots, and some of the new utilities that will have be going into this area will be under the city's jurisdiction moving forward, has staff done an analysis to see whether the revenue brought in to the city by these homes would cover that long-term, especially with eventual replacement of those assets?
So not at this point. I don't know if public works or engineering would have that kind of number at a later stage, but at this point, we would not have run an analysis like that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, but I have a question for staff. Do we have any studies on what we think we need in the town? Because 600K houses, I'm shocked that they're selling for that much out in Winding Creek, but it's expensive. How are we drawing younger people into Batavia? Because there's, college grads or young families are not affor, I'm not paying for a $600,000 house, and I have a good job. So I just, I, yes, these things are getting filled, but what, we're reducing our mix of housing, I guess, when we are pumping in such high-priced housing. So it's like, it's, we're turning into the community of seniors and wealthy, and where are we going at, on the bottom end of things?
So in terms of needs assessment, or what, where the deficiencies in housing stock are, the city did participate in a, what was called the Homes for a Changing Region, which was a CMAP, or Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning process. We participated with Genevene St. Charles. I believe it was, at this point, was about 2012 to 2014. I forget the exact timing at this point. That study did talk generally, or it did do a pretty thorough analysis of basically the existing stock of housing, along with what was, you know, what could be necessary, I believe, by 2030 or 2040, was their long-term outlook, I believe was the number. Generally, that, the, I don't have it in front of me, but generally, that report was looking at more townhomes, more multifamily, as being, basically being one of the areas that we would have a gap, along with more affordable, single-family. It did say, we basically had plenty of high-end housing, plenty of, or not as plenty, but a pretty good supply of middle-ground property as well. Now, that, like I said, that was a 2014 vintage, you know, we're post-COVID and post a lot of other changes in the market and demographics and so forth, but that's the last study that we have that we can point to in terms of saying what we lack and what we, what was viewed as being, needing to be filled in the future.
And since that study was done, we also had the Prairie Commons Townhome Community come in that added over 180 units of townhomes and more affordable housing in that area. And it is, you know, one of the things that we look at is that we do want to have an appropriate mix. We want there to be that entry-level homeowner, but we also, when that entry level wants to move into a larger property, we want to make sure that we've got sufficient of that type of stock as well, so they don't have to leave our community when they're upgrading to a larger home.
Sure, and I guess I look at it that we do have a good stock of large homes. I think this is, I think those are on the fringe of the city, and you just hear people saying, I want to move downtown, if you want to move downtown. Not sure what the residents here are going to say. I'd actually rather see a little bit higher density with lower home price in this area to encourage more people that can live downtown and want to live downtown, to be able to live close to town, rather than, I mean, you start going even just east of here, the prices of those homes are continually increasing because of the fact that in that area, there's a lot of older homes that are, that are more expensive already. So you have that opportunity for people that want to spend more on a house and have that downtown living that exists. You know, there's, up and down Batavia Avenue, there's plenty, there's a lot of, there's a lot of homes in the area that can meet that market. I would rather see something that's going to allow for, you know, the Gen Z, the millennials and stuff, to be able to get into our community, because I don't see a lot of opportunities for them to get into our downtown community.
Quick question for the developer. Did you say it's starting in the low 600s?
No, average sales.
Average sales in the low 600s?
Starting in the low 5s.
Starting in the low 5s, okay. All right. Well, I do have, everything looks pretty good at first, when it was looked at the square footage and everything else, but then when I heard the home prices, I had some of the same concerns that Alderman you had, that there's going to be, I mean, I'm just looking at it, it's not like they're really giant houses. You got three and four bedrooms, and it's like 2,500 to 3,200 square feet on a little tiny postage stamp lot. So I'm kind of turned off on it now, to tell you the truth.
So I'm kind of turned off on it now, to tell you the truth.
Alderman Peever?
I will say, as the designated young person around who recently moved to town, it was a challenge finding, I actually had to buy a home that was larger than I really needed necessarily. So there is, in my own personal experience, a bit of a lack of, you know, smaller homes. And smaller doesn't have to mean like worse condition either, it can just mean smaller. Something that either, as a starter home for a young, you know, single people or young families, or for older folks who want to downsize as they get older, having a lack of that kind of housing is a detriment to, I think, the area, just in terms of the opportunities and, you know, broad demographics that it excludes.
Alderman Bogelsinger?
I want to kind of echo some of these sentiments. When I saw the lot sizes and home sizes, I thought it was going to be somewhere in a more affordable range for a lot of people, like teachers in the community and stuff. I know that the home prices in Winding Creek are what they are, and I think that was more than I was expecting them to be, but I expected these to be kind of an answer to that and more affordable for a lot of different kinds of people. So I'm kind of more hesitant about this, hearing that.
Alderman Beck?
I would also be sad to see some of the mixed use go away. I could see a compromise that incorporated single-family homes, higher-density multifamily, and commercial as well, and provide a little, a spot there, I mean, I'm speaking selfishly as a mom, somewhere that I can send my kids, you know, like a Dairy Queen-like, a limestone-like, a corner grocery that doesn't require them to cross Randall or 31, because those are both really problematic. You know, this is my neighborhood, this is where it, and obviously, I really wouldn't want this to be a walkable community. We talk a lot about preventing traffic and trying to hedge traffic here in the city. The only way to eliminate traffic is to get people out of their cars, and we can't get people out of their cars if we don't provide destinations that they can walk and bike to. So losing that opportunity on the spot that's already designated to be mixed use and provide some commercial space, I think would be a real loss to the future of Batavia. I know it's going to take a long time before we get there, but I think we should stick with that vision for that, for that spot.
Extending that, it's worth noting that, as Mayor Shelkey points out, Batavia is a bit landlocked at this point, so any opportunities to develop in such a way is really going to be through infill development. So these so far undeveloped parts of our town are kind of a key resource for guiding things that way. So the opportunity, it's a limited time opportunity, and once they're developed, it's going to be a long time before they can possibly redevelop reasonably well, because just, you know, the life cycle of our building pattern is set up like that. So this is, it makes it sound like very dire, but it is kind of a pivotal moment that we're in, just not only here in Batavia, but as a country, to decide these things. So something to keep in mind, I feel.
Alderman Miller?
I also am looking to keep the mixed use, the higher density, and I've had many discussions, and I've seen in my own, my own neighborhood, several people are wanting to downsize and can't because their, that housing stock's not available. But at the same time, whenever someone that is empty nester or wanting to retire moves out, I've seen young families move back in. So having the higher density would allow a greater housing stock for people moving out of Chicago, moving into our town, but also people that are empty nesters or wanting to downsize to move into those places, creating a more intergenerational mix of housing and people. With people that can now work from anywhere, you can, you can have office and retail and restaurant spaces, or whatever it is you want. I remember somebody had said that they thought it was very short-sighted for the long-term growth of that neighborhood, and with all the land and the desire for the district to rebuild HC Storm, we should be master-planning that whole area to make it a second downtown, providing recreation, community, commercial opportunities, and higher density, giving folks a reason to walk, bike, and use local mass transit, and encourage people to spend their money where they live. Having this place, I know there's a lot of people that work in our town that can't live in our town. So having those spaces for people that are wanting to move here with new families, young couples, new grads, empty nesters, would allow a greater mix of Batavians for the long-term. Oh, and it would also, if people live here, spend their money here, it helps insulate Batavia from the things that are happening outside of Batavia. Makes us less susceptible to those things.
Would you like to rebut?
Yeah, just wanted to make a couple of comments. Like I said, we initially looked at townhomes on the site. We were steered away from that, from, from city staff in our initial meeting with them. One of the things about this product, that, the way Pulte has all of our products set up by consumer groups, so this product is specifically for a move-up buyer, right? This is the buyer that's currently living in your downtown in a smaller home, that has a growing family that wants to stay in the downtown, and they can do so here at the site. This is not, we do have 30-foot-wide and narrower product that's on a slab, that is your first-time home buyer, single-family home. If that was something that the council wanted to see on the site, that is a much lower price point. You could go back and forth, and we could, I don't do commercial, but I'm assuming that you have, or I would encourage you to do a market study to determine if commercial is even viable at the site. McKee has, I think, 2,000 vehicles a day, and Van Norwick has 1,000. Absent that, you're relying solely on foot traffic, which is why this kind of made sense, five or so blocks from the city center, so. I, that, yeah, that's about all I have. Thanks.
Okay, well, before we...
Dan has his hand up.
Oh, Alderman Chansett. Dan?
Hello.
Hello.
Had a question for the representative from Pulte.
Go ahead.
Matt?
Yeah.
You do, you do come at this with an interesting perspective, having sat on both sides of the table, having worked in municipal government. Can you speak to the adaptability of the site? After taking public comment tonight, if this is not the right kind of, of product or the right time for this, for this product, if we can't reach, you know, some sort of consensus on this, can you speak to the adaptability of the site? Or if you were sitting in the seat I'm supposed to be sitting in tonight, how would you feel about a presentation like this, this evening before Batavia? I realize that's a tough question, but I'm very curious, and you're the only guy that can answer this question. And I mean this, I really do appreciate your counsel on this.
Yeah, so the one thing I'll say is that this buyer that currently lives in your town has the disposable income to invest in your downtown, right? If you, if we were to do the 30-foot product on slab, it's a much less affluent buyer that's coming to your town from somewhere else. So it's just the, the type of housing stock that the council wants to see. We've heard this directly from your residents that live in this area. I didn't survey all of your residents, but they have asked us to do a project just like this at this location.
And given its location, I envisioned something more transitional, I did, with there being higher traffic counts with the types of roads that are nearby, and then imagining what this is supposed to look like in the future. I just assumed that this would be better as transitional housing. It, I have, I have trouble looking at this, I've only seen single-family houses, but I also want to go where the market is going to go, because we have before looked at proposals and changed our minds about our own planning when we realized that we didn't have enough commercial, that there was too much commercial. So I, I've had one heart attack today already, I don't know if I could, I could have two. This one didn't give me a heart attack when I saw it, but I see the even higher density as being even more desirable.
So just to make one more comment. As you guys probably are, Pulte Homes nationally is a bit risk averse. We don't go into a project unless we fully vet the metrics of it. It's a pretty substantial packet that we put together and serve up to our asset management committee. We analyze the market and have determined that there's a need for this type of housing. So we know that these homes will sell, and they will sell, you know, well to your residents. Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Lehman.
So I don't know, you all must have just snuck my notes, because many of you said what I had been thinking, but I, I guess one of my concerns is, if this division goes in as proposed here, that we will be pricing out residents who already live in Batavia, who've grown up here, who are multi-generational, who teach in our town, who are on our fire department. I mean, many of those people you saw tonight on our fire department live in this neighborhood, they live in the HC Storm neighborhood. And I just don't want to see the current residents of Batavia priced out, whether it's property taxes, or then the other older homes being bought and rebuilt larger and bigger. We love Batavia because it has the history, it has the residents who've lived here for generations, and I want to figure out how we can continue with that while also inviting other people to move in at the higher price point. But I'm just not sure that this is the right neighborhood to put in a 600K subdivision. And I had one other thought, now I cannot remember it, but that was my primary thought. And then also, though, as Keenan was saying, with people moving out of, wanting to downsize, empty nesters, they want to stay in Batavia, but they're not quite ready yet to go into assisted-living communities. We don't have that in-between yet. We don't have the housing market for grandparents to live in a neighborhood nearby their grandkids coming out of their larger homes, but not yet going into the homestead, and we need those size homes.
Well, then I'll finish up with my two cents. I, if there's one thing I've learned in my life, is I don't know anything about real estate. With that said, I do trust developers who are putting millions of dollars in, on the line versus what my opinion of what an area needs. They've done the studies, they know who's going to buy, believe me, they don't want to invest in something that they like and hope it sells. They're, they're listening to the market, and while we may not know of all the up-and-comers in Batavia, there might be more than you think. So I don't have a heart attack, I think, I mean, they did a nice job, so I, I would, I would support this and support an investor coming into the city to, to develop nice homes. So the next step, we open up to public?
Yes, that would be the next step. The processes would be for initial half hour, and you can then see if more time is necessary.
I think that's probably a pretty good time limit to start with, so it's 8:05 now. Let's look, while we're there, there's a big crowd here. I'd like to listen to as many opinions as we can. If you have a similar opinion that somebody else said, try to keep it short, so we can get through as many people as possible. We didn't make a list, did we?
No, you can just line up.
Yeah, why don't you line up there on the south side of the room? And if you can keep your individual comments to under three minutes, that would be appreciated as well. We've got five more discussions, a few resolutions, and an ordinance to get through tonight. So there is no action coming out of here, so don't, no need to panic, there's a long process ahead of us. So go ahead, Bill.
Thanks, Bill McGrath.
And everybody, I'm sorry, if you could please list your name as you come up for the record.
Bill McGrath, 407 Elm Street, Batavia residence since 1978. I had one question for the developer, and that is, do any of these models have a first bedroom, or first-floor bedroom at all? No. Okay. With all due respect to Pulte, they're here for one reason, it's to increase the value to their shareholders. So I think this has nothing to do with Pulte. You know, they say that sometimes government is more reactive than proactive. I think when you have a little piece of property sitting there so quietly, and somebody comes in with something, you immediately become reactive. So the reason I'm here tonight is to try and separate this proposal from what I think is really called for, and that is, ask the plan commission to really review the comprehensive land use plan, knowing that this is probably, except for the apartments downtown, probably one of the most important land use decisions you will be asked to make, in my experience over the last, say, 20 years. Because these parcels, there is no other parcel, except for the parcel immediately next door, that is like this, that's in town, where the city is in control. And I've, you know, I used to work here, and some elected officials say that the government is not a land developer. Well, you are. The law, the constitution, the state statutes say that you are a land developer in that you get to control what the destiny is of the land uses of your property, as long as you think them through. So this has nothing to do with it not being part of your job. And some other thoughts I had, and I know, I know you represent people who live here now, and I understand that, they vote for you and all that, but I think you represent more than the people who just live here. You represent generations in the future who will live here, because these houses aren't going to come down. I can tell you when I worked here, that we struggled with older people letting their houses kind of fall apart because they didn't have the money, and we would force them to keep those houses up because we didn't want to see tear downs. I know of at least two elected officials here, and many friends of mine who don't live here anymore, who gave their heart and soul to work in this community, and there is no place for them to move to. There are no first-floor suites anywhere walkable in town. So I'm going to skip this, I always talk too long, as you know. I just think that the goal should be to ask the plan commission, now I understand the city's about to hire this Qualtronics or whatever, I think you really need to look at where our demographics have gone the last 20 years, what age groups we're losing, what income kinds of things we're losing, we're losing tradespeople, which, which really relate to the quality of life that we can all have here. And ask the plan commission to do a redo of, or a relook at the comprehensive plan for the vacant parcels in town, especially this one. And, you know, Pulte, they're all over the country, they're, they're risk averse, but that means that they're, they're, they don't want to make less than the profit they want to make. So if you tell them, you know, come back in six months, it's okay, because they're just a contract purchaser. Siemens is a multinational corporation, they couldn't care less about what they get out of this piece of property. It's nothing to them. So I think the city says, you take the time that you want to, until everybody feels comfortable, and you go from there. Thanks.
Thank you. I will agree, I was disappointed to not see a first-floor master in any of the plans.
Hey, Jim Farrenbach, 436 O'Bonzie Trail. Just a couple of things I heard. So I heard CMAP mentioned, so CMAP had a study go to 240, which after the 220 census, was found to be dramatically wrong in a lot of respects, right? So when we pull up that, that information, that session that we had in 2012, a lot of that is proven incorrect. And the reason why I've mentioned that is that, I look at this proposal, and I'm kind of bought to the phrase that life is what happens when you're making, when you're making other plans, right? So the fact is, 650 unfortunately is not out of the realm of reason for what homes are going for in Batavia. If we look at where we're at in 2023 versus 2005, we are a wealthy community, there's no way around it. We look at our demographics, kind of where we're at, income-wise, it's going to be there. I've heard a lot about entry points for young couples. I can tell you, when my wife and I moved in in 2005, the entry point was, and still is, when seniors move out, young people move in, in the older neighborhoods. We are the Saudi Arabia of older homes. I think we have 3,000 here. We are the Saudi Arabia of older homes. I think we have 3,000 here currently, if not more, built before World War II. That's not going to wait anytime soon. That's been the pattern we've seen over the decades. That being said, I want to give time to other people who want to speak. I will say, you can always just say, hey, can we allocate a certain number of sites that are affordable to the medium income in Batavia? It's not like we have to throw the whole thing out because we don't like the initial price point. Any developer coming in, I got news for you. The difference between 650 K and 475 K isn't going to really change much as far as your demographics go. The fact is, we're a wealthy community. These are what homes go for around here. And we just have to work within the means, the choices that are given to us, to make sure we get the best, best package for the entire community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vince Tessitore, and I'm from the law firm of Lindell and Tessitore. We represent the owner of 228 North Van Nordwick. And if you look at the site plan, if a traffic, if a car were going eastbound on that northerly proposed access road and crossed Van Nordwick, you would literally be right in the yard of our client. So our client lives right across from that northerly access point. And our client primarily has, has two concerns. Number one, with respect to the lot size, particularly north of McKee Street. If we're building $600,000 plus homes, the density is too high because those homes should be on larger lots. I don't think that putting a price point like that in a small lot size speaks well for Batavia or for the community in general. And I think it's important to note that there's a distinction between what's going on here north of McKee Street and south of McKee Street. If you look on the site plan, you'll note that north of McKee Street, both on the east and west sides of the property, those developments are zoned and developed as low density residential. However, on the south side of McKee Street to the east, that area is high density residential. So at the very least, we feel that the proposed development north of McKee Street should be consistent with its easterly and westerly neighbors and be low density residential. Now, what does that mean? It means that if they're building $600,000 homes, they should be on larger lots, the minimum lot size required by low density residential. Our client's second primary concern is the access point rate across from his house, the northerly access point on Van Nordwick. From our estimation, that's roughly 200 feet from the entrance to the school north of it. We have concerns not only about our client egressing and ingressing into his property, but also that being a safety concern for schoolchildren and their parents who are, who are going to and from the school. We just think that's too close to the school. And the higher density nature of the development is going to create traffic and congestion issues that the school just simply shouldn't have to deal with. So that's it. And thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Ress. I live on North Van Nordwick Avenue. What I wanted to say was the city of Batavia has a vision to increase both walkability and bikeability throughout the city. And one way to accomplish this is to create destinations that are accessible by walking and biking. The property at 1,000 McKee Street is currently zoned mixed use, which would allow for the development of commercial space that could create such a destination. Dining, retail, small medical offices could fill the space and provide a location for the surrounding neighborhoods to access through these active transportation methods. The land area may still allow for some residential development, but the type of housing created should be varied to accommodate diverse community needs. Following the missing middle housing concept, housing styles that fall between detached, single family houses and large apartments, such as duplexes, cottage courts, and townhouses, would meet the diverse housing needs while contributing to the walkability and bikeability of the area. Mixed use compact neighborhoods are a key tenet to new urbanism, an urban planning design that puts walkability and bikeability at the forefront of planning decisions. This design concept allows for destinations to be close to where people live, which makes it easier to walk and bike. Urban planning studies have found that ideal walking distances range from five to 10 minutes in length, with the greatest number of walkers across all age groups occurring at the shorter distances. To put this in perspective, from where I live on North Van Nordwick Avenue, a walk to Limestone Coffee would take me 24 to 26 minutes, and a walk to the shops and restaurants on River Street would take me 26 to 28 minutes. In contrast, a walk to the property at 1,000 McKee would take me only 10 minutes. Mixed use neighborhoods create a healthy community, both physically and mentally, through increases in walking and biking, create a stronger sense of community throughout the neighborhood as people interact more with one another, and can increase the desirability of living in the neighborhood due to the close proximity of available amenities. I asked the city council to carefully consider the use of the property at 1,000 McKee Street. The city has the perfect opportunity to begin to implement design features that align with its goals of increasing the walkability and bikeability of the city and create neighborhoods that provide a healthy, connected community. Thank you.
Hello. Evan Thomas, resident on North Van Nordwick Avenue. I am a dreamer. I like, I like big ideas and all that sort of stuff. But I do understand some, some things about the world that we're living in. I understand that housing, we have a shortage of housing and that people need places to live. The Polte representative said that their, their developments sell out, you know, right away. They sell them out. They sell them out. They sell, they build them. They sell them out. That's because we know. We know people. We know ourselves. We know other people from the community that are, you know, making cash offers above the list price for houses. They're desperate for houses. It's not because they want to buy a $600,000 Polte home, which I thought he was going to say 250 when he was talking about these houses and this style. I mean, $600,000. You're, you're building a Walmart house and asking Tiffany prices. Okay, this is not a quality build. We know they're not quality builds. We know they're not because when they acquire that property, they start paying property taxes on it. As soon as they sell that home, the homeowner starts to pay the property taxes. So their only real mission is to build that house and get somebody in it as soon as possible, so they're no longer paying the bill. That's not a quality bill. Build. They're going to hire local craftsmen and women that are very skilled in their trades, but they're not able to exercise those skills because they have to meet the deadlines of a big corporation. That their only real interest is their bottom line. So I'm not surprised that all their houses sell. People are desperate. Of course, they're careful and risk averse, like somebody else mentioned. That just means they're not going to put out the money unless they know they're getting everything and more back for it. So I don't like it. I don't think it's good for the community. I understand that Batavia markets itself as an affluent community. But there is a concept called affluenza. And that is where people with money, it makes you miserable. Okay? So let's say you get a loan. You can get loans for almost anything. So if somebody gets a loan for this house, well, you know, that ratchets up the pressure even more. We have a mental crisis, mental health crisis in this country. That's another one of those things that even though I'm a dreamer, I understand we have a mental health crisis. So you get yourself your $600,000 home, you're working two jobs. Oh, no, you lose one. Somebody in your family gets sick, you get sick, you can't work anymore, you lose your house. Then we're calling the fire department because we have substance abuse issues, we have suicide issues. I mean, this is not a good thing for communities. It's multifactorial. It's not a simple thing. Let's just dump a bunch of houses there. And I love biology. So those are not going to be native. I don't know what the definition of native is. But for those, those little green spaces there, it's not going to be native plants. And as far as saving trees, you know, it's a lot easier to pay a little fine when, oops, you knock over a nice tree that you're supposed to save to make room for another house, right? So they just pay the fine because they got deep pockets. And so it's not going to be quality. It's not going to be good. It's not going to fit this ideal of what people want Batavia to be. So I would skip it.
My name is Ellen Knouts, and I live at 707 Houston Street. I was wondering if there was a different slide that showed the site development with H C Storm in the same picture? Thank you. So one thing, one question I had for staff or for the applicant was here at H C Storm, and I'm using the mouse here, this is the asphalt that is used for recess and also used for kids lining up. And right next to the asphalt is the playground that's utilized. And if you notice, the boundary between that and the asphalt and the playground is pretty small. And I was wondering if anyone had an exact measurement or even a range?
I don't think we would have, at least. You're asking for the size of the?
The distance from that asphalt to the property line.
I don't know, Matt, if you would have that number either.
Okay. So I'll just email and find it. But it's incredibly small. And I've lived in my home for 19 years, and every single day practically, the students will play recess in this area. Jim is held in this area. And then when they have big activities, the students utilize the entire area. And so the reason that I was late here today was because I spoke at the BPS 101 board meeting regarding the memo that they provided the city. Number one, I was asking them to reconsider maybe asking for land because this is incredibly tight. Just backing up, I think the reason that they use this area rather than back here is because there's trees and there's shade. And that's important on days like this. And I also don't know if this is also soccer field anymore or not. But it's still an incredibly small area. And so I mentioned to the school board just this evening that I'm surprised that they are agreeable to cash rather than land. And then they made this statement that said, we are confident that this development aligns well with our community's best interest. And so I said, I questioned that statement because while this is the land as part of the land grant, which is the, which is the stub for potential traffic fixes, I haven't seen any data or evidence that shows how that would be, how that would remediate the current problems at H C Storm. Currently, with the circle drive, the kids can walk all of this way to get to the sidewalk. Now, if there's this northern access here, then I'm not sure how, how the safety gets remediated. And then on top of that, there are many parents that park along here, all the way down. And with this entrance and the garage doors, that parking is limited. So they're going to have to go, the parents are going to have to go somewhere else. Plus, I'm wondering, well, I'm pretty sure that people who buy homes here in the 600,000s aren't going to want at 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, August through May, people parking here. So are we going to end up getting signs that says no parking? So I asked the school board what evidence and data that they had that tearing down trees and not asking for land and having a little sub is actually that it does indeed align well with our community best interests. And I do plan on working with the school district to have them clarify that statement because I feel like they've eliminated any leverage that they could have to actually better serve the students. I'm not advocating for completely leaving this land open, but I also think that there's something better than this for our students for the long term. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh Einstein Curtis. I'm on North Van Nordwick. Moved here in August. Want to point out, I'm one of the younger people who moved in for the community. I want to, first of all, instead of repeating it, second, the comments on H C Storm, it's been crazy after moving in, seeing it. And second, the comments on the biking. I want to point out that there is a community, a senior living community in Wheaton right now, that has signs out front that says four miles to downtown Wheaton. Very convenient for a senior living community. And I keep thinking about that every day, whenever I come and look at what planning is going on. I don't want to see that. And Polte himself mentioned, the people in the community out past Randall, is that right where it is? Winding Creek? Okay. That community wants a downtown. Moving here, they have the same downtown. Our downtown is small. We are not Geneva. We are not Chicago. Our mixed use zoning, and now I'm getting into my comment, our mixed use zoning rules are actually very restrictive to be profitable for a commercial developer. It's under five stories and 30% frontage for residential. There's no way you're going to build commercial properties with 30% residential frontage on these properties. So my comment is mainly about the zoning here, which is that we're looking at this property as mixed use. So how do we make it attractive for what we want to do with it? And if we have people who want to move to downtown to live near downtown, well, how do we do that? And that is not going to be by getting rid of the only space near downtown available without tearing down houses or building new stuff. And on top of that, only other quick comment is, I saw the picture of the houses. I didn't see solar panels. I'm seeing outflow. I'm not seeing anything about how we're looking at building a sustainable community. And it is a consideration, especially considering the recent power outages. We should start also considering some of that into our long-term sustainability for the community and maybe require that as part of the plans. But that's secondary. My big issue is, we need a downtown, and I'd love to see downtown expand and be able to walk to a supermarket, you know, within like 10 minutes. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm John Gasper. I'm at 1351 Chilum Drive. So I'm on the east side. My family and I have lived in Batavia for 25 years. We want to stay in this community. As we age, and now that we are empty nesters, we would like to downsize to smaller home, but not an apartment. I feel that property being discussed tonight along McKee Street would be an ideal location for a 55-plus community. However, the homes would need to be affordable for middle-class seniors on fixed incomes, not costing over $400,000. Well, $600,000. Batavia doesn't need luxury senior living, but a nice subdivision that matches the neighborhoods around it. The houses would have a smaller footprint than some of the homes being built by Polte in Winding Creek. So they would be better fit for this smaller property with smaller lots. In addition, senior housing would not be a drain on the schools by adding more students while still paying property taxes. Batavia has several senior living complexes, but I feel this type of senior community of single homes is lacking in Batavia. I urge the planning commission in the city of Batavia to address this housing needs in our computer, in our community. John and Jenny Gasper. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Steve Zink. That's my wife, Janice. Two boys are in the hall. We moved here in June from Westmont. Very, very happy to be here. We live, we live right here, off of Ward there. Yeah. So I have just a couple of nuts and bolts type of comments. The first is 70, 70 homes residences, right? This is going to require about 2.2 million kilowatt hours additional power. Are we set up to support that? Are we thinking about that? Right? Because we've, we've moved here in June, and we've had probably five or six power outages already since, since we've been here. We love it here, but yeah, this is getting a little annoying. The next bit relates to, as the last gentleman mentioned, CO2 The next bit relates to, as the last gentleman mentioned, CO2 footprint, right? About 490 tons of CO2 equivalent per capita for this new community, right? So what are we doing to offset that additional emission? 490 metric tons. So a ton, a metric ton is 1,000 kilograms. Kilogram is 2.2 pounds. That's a lot of CO2. Okay. So that's a lot of trees. The last person who was up, you know, regarding the school, right? This up here was a big, big line of trees. It's all gonna get mowed down. And there's a couple of trees in South McKee that are gonna get mowed down. So it's just something to consider, right? We're not, we're not living in the 20th century anymore. We're living in the 21st century. We need to think about these things. The last item relates to the soil testing that the representative from Polte mentioned. Is that going to be made public knowledge, publicly available, those soil testing results? Right? What do they do?
The IEPA provided the letter of no further remediation, so I believe that that is a matter of public record.
Okay, great. So yeah, if you can include that in the notice...
We actually don't, the City of Batavia does not have that. It would be something that you could obtain from IEPA.
Okay. Well, I would think as a city administrator, you would make this, at least the link known to the people in the town, right? So we know what the new folks are gonna be exposed to if they're being exposed to anything. I'm a scientist. I'm an engineer. I can understand these things if I read them.
And ourselves, we had to get a mitigation system for...
Yeah. When we were in Westmont, we had to get a... Oh, for this one as well, yes. So I'll, I guess the last bit from my part is, you know, I support the commercial mixed use. I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, whatever we can do to improve the sort of, you know, downtown accessible atmosphere in the town is needed, right? If we want to compete with the Geneva's and the St. Charles's, right? You know, anyway, go ahead. Thank you.
Couple of comments. I too am concerned about the school being limited. I see the parkway that the kids can walk through, but I also know that there's no room for parking there, for guest parking. Where are, it's driveway, 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 driveway. There's no room for additional cars in this area. So what's to prevent someone from having a party and telling people, "Oh, park in the school at the Saturday. Nobody's there." And then they use that little walkway through. So just an idea that I don't think the setup is the best we can do, is the best we can offer.
We're gonna extend the time a little bit. We've got four people left, so we'll allow them, and then we will close it up.
My name is Patrick Duransky. I live at 1134 Ward Road. So my house is, my front yard, I lost my mouse. My house is about right here. My backyard is McKee. My front yard is Ward Road. My wife and I and my four children have lived in the community for over 20 years in this section of town. As some of the other, I won't go into many other points other than mentioning that I agree with the points that this area over here, next to HC Storm School, is used quite extensively by sports teams, the school itself. The high school uses this for a soccer field. And we are squeezing this town for open space. And I hate to see this. I can't even believe we're proposing something that's going to squeeze in this many homes in a small area. So my wife and I used to live in St. Charles. We moved down to this town because we loved the idea of a small-town feel. The community that we met here, many of the people grew up here, and that's what I like about this town. This, to me, looks like we're trying to reproduce what Naperville has, right? We're squeezing every square inch out of this. And what this is going to do is set a precedent. Right now, we have, as far as high density, I don't agree that this is a neighborhood for high density. We have high-density apartments here. We have high-density apartments over here. We have townhomes to the left over here. So we already have high density in this area. We need open space. We need to plan for open space, and we don't have that here. We have two retention ponds which are not safe for children playing, right? What this sets precedent for, in my opinion, is these homes around it, if they're, and I think everybody's been shocked tonight by a home that is on a 50-foot by 75-foot lot going for $600,000. I think that's way, way out of the norm of the neighborhood, and it sets a precedent for, that's great, my home value goes up, but what does that do? I think we need to ask ourselves, is this the best thing for the current residents and the future residents, right? We have the firemen that were recognized here tonight, they couldn't live in that community. There's no way. Polte is here again for one reason. We know what that is, is to squeeze as many dollars out of that land as they can possibly do it. That's the proposal. I can't think of any other proposal that can squeeze any more dollars out of that than the proposal they have here tonight. I'm not impressed by the Consumer Report information that I read online with Polte Homes. I don't think they get great ratings for their quality, but that's another point. So I would like to see, as a resident, I would like to see open space. I think we need to do another study. The last study was 12 to 15 years ago. I think we need to poll the people and do some more studies on the use of the area. I'm an avid cyclist, and I go up and down McKee. I don't feel safe. We've had two residents get hit by a car in the recent past. This is not gonna help. You can't paint a white line, and that's not gonna preserve the safety of the people who are riding up and down there. I've had cars swerve at me on residential streets, saying that I don't belong in the street, that I should be on the sidewalk. Apparently, they don't know that it's not legal to ride on the sidewalk, that I do belong on the street, and that I pay my taxes, just like they do. So I'm against this. I'm not opposed to single-family homes. I don't know how we make that affordable. You know, that's another issue that we have to do studies for. But the amount of land that they're grabbing here and the amount of homes that you're trying to put on here and the pricing, I am vehemently against that. So, thank you.
We're gonna continue the tour of Ward Road residents right now. My name is Sarah Barris. I live at 1112 Ward Road, and I am up there as well. I am one of the homes that the backyard will back up to four of these lots. So my personal backyard has four lots that will back up to it. So reiterating what my neighbors have said, I have severe concerns about the amount of homes in this space. My husband and I moved into that home in 2015. We have been Batavia residents since 2005, and I'm also a 24th-year school district teacher here in Batavia. And my home away from home for 15 years was HC Storm School. When we moved into that home, my son was in third grade, and we fully well knew that the possibility of a development was going to happen. And I support that in the name of my community and making sure we are, in the words of the school district, always growing. However, I do not think this is the appropriate way to do it. The size of the lots is very concerning to reiterate the fact that there is no possible way that the HC Storm pickup situation is going to be improved by one little strip right there. And I implore the city to actually go talk to the teachers and families of HC Storm School as this impacts them directly. In conjunction with that, the number of homes going in that place is concerning to me because of the fact that HC Storm is in a state of not great structural state. I don't even know what I want to say. We know there's been two school district referendums that have not passed in the last school year, and a lot of the funding was gonna go towards HC Storm School because they have so many needs in that building. Whatever development happens in this area, the impact on HC Storm needs to be considered. That is, even though I'm no longer a teacher there, I teach in another building, it is still near and dear to my heart, as are my friends that work there. Thanks so much. The last thing I want to say is, again, I'm a person that is a teacher. I have no knowledge of real estate other than the brief stint I did as a receptionist at Coldwell Banker. And I, of course, went right to the interwebs to see what I could find out about Polte Homes, remembering some news stories I saw back in the day, like on Dateline. And I went to the Better Business Bureau, which, again, I don't know if that's 100% appropriate in this, but this is what I found. It is not an accredited business, and it has a rating of 1.13 out of 5 on the BBB and currently has closed 525 complaints over the last three years. So the concerns that people have talked about in the quick construction, the cookie-cutter construction, the methods of Polte Homes, and no personal attack against the gentleman that is here, is concerning to me. So, as I say, I implore you to talk to the direct community members of the current HC Storm School, including the teachers, and not just the school district staff at R-JAC, because those are the people who are going to be affected the most. Thank you.
I'm Amy Pavnikah. I live on the corner of Houston and Mallory. So I am on that map. I can see, we live next to the, across the street from the Vikings, next to the Masons. Been a resident here in the same home for 27 years now. We moved into the neighborhood because it's an old, there's a very old neighborhood. Our home is over 100 years old. Every house on the block and all the neighborhoods in the surrounding area, they all look different, which is something I really, really love. And I think the people who live in the homes would say the same thing. I keep hearing, you know, "High density, high density, high density. We need high density. We need high density." Why do we need high density? As Sarah had mentioned, the schools are already taxed physically. The structures are. This is just gonna tax it even more. As the mayor had stated at the beginning, there is already a lot of high density on the west side. Why add more high density? Where I live, I hear the fire trucks going by all the time, and they're heading towards the apartment complex. Every day, several a day. This is just gonna make things worse. So I would say, you know, I'm not against development of that area, either with single-family homes or mixed use. I'm just asking that, let's be reasonable here. It's already, we have a lot of density on the west side. We don't need more high density. Let's build smart, not, that's something we're gonna regret in the future. Let's build something that will match the already-existing neighborhood. We live in a very, very charming neighborhood. We don't live in a neighborhood where every third house looks like the one before. Our houses all look different. And I think that if we put in a mixed-use, something charming, something that would bring people to the area, and even some housing in there. But why high density? I just don't get that. I really don't think we need that on our side. And let's match it to the neighborhood that already exists, because that's why a lot of us moved into these homes. They all look different. They're charming. We like the charm. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Allemjon. I reside at 427 Houston Street, and I realize I'm the last one, so I'm just gonna say what they said, plus a couple really quick lines. Originally, I was gonna reacquaint everybody with the comprehensive plan, because it gives very prescriptive and actionable detail of what we expect, the growth and development of our city to go by. It talks about, I was originally gonna sit up here and quote it for you. Like I said, I had copies, but I'm gonna leave it to you folks to really deep dive in there, because that is the lens in which we should be making decisions about housing in our community, not only just for our current residents, like somebody said, but for our future ones. And I will say, based on the block that I live on, a lot of those generations come back and come back again, because they are, they were finding viable housing, and they were finding viable employment, and they thought it was a good idea to raise their children here, too. Now, I want to talk about, people say, "High-density housing." Technically, I live in a high-density housing neighborhood. I'm at 427 Houston Street, R-1H, and I am in favor of more housing in Batavia, per the plan. And here is where I challenge you, and I would actually challenge any future developer, as well as any, anyone who works at the city council, or even in our staff, to come up to our neighborhood. Come up to our neighborhood. And much like somebody else had just described, when you walk down our block, we have, we have single-family homes of varying sizes. We have apartments. We have multi-generational houses. And with that, if you came to our rock and block party, you would have seen, we have diversity of folks there. We have two new young families moved in with kids. We have couples just starting out. We have a couple of empty nesters, and, well, older folk. And so my challenge to you really is just twofold. Please lean long and hard in our comprehensive plan, particularly as it relates to our housing. And number two, please, if you have, you're doing something boring at home and have 20 minutes to need to get away, come up. Come up at Park at 427 Houston Street. Walk down to the property in which we are talking about, and just envision how the flow of our neighborhoods can reconnect to that neighborhood as well, irrespective of what is built on it. Thank you very much.
We got one last one. Okay, this is it. Last one.
Last one. I just changed my mind. Gene Schneider, 925 South Harrison. I've lived in this neighborhood since '60. I moved here when I was, whoa, nine. And very interested as to what's going on, because it's a very unique piece of property, all surrounded by housing. It was a large industrial parcel. So that's a parcel that now with the zoning, all you elected officials have 100% control over what can be done there. Not the Development Department, not Polte Homes. You guys can control it. You have an idea of what's needed in this city and what might be needed in the future, more so than the developer. It's a very important decision you're gonna be making right now. And I hope you take your time, and I hope you don't jump into this. A lot of the comments that I heard early on were way too early in the process, but that's fine. Now you've got an idea where everybody's going, so I just hope you really give it a lot of thought, and I'm kinda glad that we're gonna finally see something built there. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody on the council wanna add or have any additional comments?
I just wanted to say one quick thing to put one residence-minded ease about Polte's plan to naturalize and use native plants, because I fully trust, based on Matt and the experience in Montgomery, and then also other Polte developments that I have seen, that they actually, as long as we as a council enforce it and require it, they have done some beautiful, beautiful naturalized detention basins with a really, really nice native plant. So I just wanted to put that one little plug for defense of Polte there.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming down and giving your opinions, and your voices are heard. I recommend reaching out to your alderman as we move forward. We're not making decisions tonight. This was an opportunity to, for all of us to learn and hear, and for the developer to get a feel of what he's up against. So that's all we have on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. With that, we will move to the next discussion. Item six, Westside Cemetery Colimbarium, final selection of the sculpture. Gary, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, alderman. For approximately the last six weeks, the three cemetery colimbarium sculptures have been on display here in the council chambers as well as online. Thanks to Lori Bodeman for assisting in getting the online page set up, as well as the survey. We received a total of 459 votes online, so a pretty good turnout, if you will, online. With, in my memo, you see there's a pretty good distribution of the votes. Benediction, that is the full-size sculpture at the far end down there that Susan is modeling. Thank you, Susan. They received 28.1% of the votes. Genesis is the model in the middle that received 25.9%. And finally, Eternal Flame, the model closest to me, received 46% of the votes. So the final selection is the next step in the process, assuming council is wanting to move forward with a final selection. Then the next step after that will be staff would enter into negotiations with the artist for the commission and installation of the final sculpture. We have budgeted up to $40,000 for this work. Any final contract will be brought back to city council via a formal resolution in the future. So I don't know if council is comfortable just going around and voting, or if you wanted to write it on a piece of paper, however you want to do it, but I think it's time to really vote for Benediction is number, let's just call him Benediction, would be one. Genesis would be two, and Eternal Flame would be three. Or if you want to write the... Or if you want to write down the names, that's fine.
And just to clarify, the popular vote winner was Eternal Flame?
The popular vote winner was Eternal Flame. Yep. So Benediction, one, Genesis, two, Eternal Flame, three.
How do we want to do this? We'll just do them one at a time and see how many votes. Who here on the council is in favor of item one, the first one?
Benediction.
Is this a single vote?
That's the full-size one.
Online, do you want to vote with your hand?
So Benediction, who would like to see Benediction?
I'd like it a lot, but I think it's too small.
I think we could make a summary statement that these are all awesome. So whoever, if somebody, if one of the artists is watching, I mean, it's going to be tough, but we're swaying. So nobody. Item two is?
Genesis.
Genesis. We have three votes, none on there. Okay. And then Eternal Flame. Okay, and we got Dan Changetz as well. It's pretty, and Alan as well. Okay. I think that's clear direction, yeah.
Thank you very much. And yes, we will go then to the artist. That'll be the next step.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, on to item seven, discussion approval, Class E1 liquor license for Batavia Moose Lodge.
Deputy Chief Mike Johnson will speak up on this matter.
Hi. Good evening. The police department did complete a background check and investigation to determine whether the Batavia Moose Lodge, number 682, located at 1535 South Batavia Avenue, and the operations manager, Kelly Schakenbauer, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in Batavia. All required documents have been submitted by the business, and thus far, we've had no issues which would preclude the business or owner from receiving a Class E1 liquor license.
Summarize what the change is, because they've had a liquor license for a while.
They had a county license.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. September 5th.
This is a county license, because this is post-annexation. By September 5th, they need to change over to a city license in order to continue serving. And they've saved some money in the change, exactly.
So does this change, like, how they would be running their business or anything?
Nope, nothing.
Nothing changes. They just become Batavia jurisdiction.
Yeah, and thanks, Laura, for reminding people that the fee is actually less from the city than it is from the county.
Alderman Millay who had that attribution, I think.
Okay. Yeah, we're looking for, yeah, discussion or approval. Are we taking action?
Really ordinarily, this just goes to, you'll see it next on the consent agenda on the next city council meeting. So unless there was any objection, you know, to them receiving it. But we had, as part of our annexation agreement, that they would be able to receive a local liquor license and also the video gaming license. And they're still gathering their documentation with regard to the video gaming license. So we don't have that before you yet.
I do have a question. So I know that they have events outside that serve alcohol. Are they going to have to get a special permit for that? Or does this license, just everything that they've done every year, with their events and everything, cover that?
License would cover it. They don't have to get a special.
Okay.
Does anybody object at all? Does anybody object? Okay, then we will see it on consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, ordinance 23-41, amending the official zoning map from R-0 Single Family to PFL Public Facilities and Institutional for 1535 South Batavia Avenue.
All right, thank you for everybody's time. I'll keep it short. Essentially, the Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on August 2nd to review amendment to the official zoning map for the two parcels at the Moose Lodge property. Draft ordinance 23-41 would rezone 1535 South Batavia Avenue from R-0 Single Family Residential to the PFI Public Facilities and Institutional District. This would be consistent with how we have rezoned other properties like this, the VFW, the fraternal organizations, churches, government bodies across the city. And this is, was a part of the annexation agreement that the city council did take action on in early July of this year. You know, at the Plan Commission meeting, we did have two members of the public come and address the Plan Commission. One of the adjacent residents expressed some concerns about the future redevelopment of the Moose Lodge, as well as some of the activities that do occur on the site. Staff did note that there was no proposed redevelopment of this property, that the Moose Lodge is seeking to conduct their current business operation in its same fashion, just within the city of Batavia's limits. And then another individual was part of Moose Lodge and did express some concerns over how, how the information came about in a news article. And then at that point, Mayor Shelkey did graciously respond to the member of the Moose Lodge and, and talked about our positive relationship with the Moose Lodge and Moose Heart throughout the years, and how Moose Heart has graciously provided property for the fire station on the west side of Batavia, and hoped to continue such a strong relationship as they become part of the city of Batavia. It would be staff's recommendation for the city council or for the committee of the whole to take action tonight and recommend approval of draft ordinance 23-41, so it can move on to the September 5th city council agenda for approval.
Any comments, questions, concerns, opinions?
I move to approve it.
All right, motion by Alderman Sulfah, second by Alderman Millay, to, this is to recommend Resolution 23-41, amending the official zoning map from R-0, recommending that to city council. Roll call, please.
Changetz.
Sulfah.
Sulfah.
Hi.
Changetz.
Hi.
Barron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi. Millay.
Hi.
Uwer.
Hi.
Saron.
Hi.
Vocal singer.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Lancy.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
The eyes have it.
The eyes have it.
Thank you. On to item nine, Resolution 23-105-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Everlast Blacktop Inc. for the 2023 CDBG new sidewalk installation project in an amount not to exceed $132,590. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you. So earlier this year, we did receive notification from Kane County that we had received grant funds from their Community Development Block Grant Program. I did want to take one second to thank Rahad Bari. Rahad has headed up the CDBG program now for several years, and seemingly every year, we've received grant funds. So through his efforts, we've received a lot of free money from the county to help the neighborhoods that are eligible. If you will look in the pedestrian and bicycle plan, you're going to notice that these particular sidewalks are not listed in that plan within the next 10 years. But we also came to city council and verified with city council that we did want to move forward with these sidewalks because of the fact that we were getting the free money. So they still are worthwhile doing, even if they weren't originally designated in the plan, atop, in our 10-year plan. So we opened bids. The bid opening results are listed in the front page of Rahad's memo. The bid opening results unfortunately came in considerably higher than what the engineer's estimate was. The city has budgeted $100,000 for its share of the cost, and the county had given us a grant for a maximum of $53,600. The bid from, the highest bid was actually all the way, all the way up to $246,000. So the bids came in considerably higher. After the bids came in, Rahad did talk with Everlast Blacktop to explore possibilities, and they agreed to hold their unit price, even if we reduced the scope of the project, to focus only on Madison Street. So that is our recommendation, is to still continue forward with the project, only perform Madison Street. This allows us to get a majority of the grant funds from the county. Instead of the $53,000, we're still going to get $48,000. And by reducing the scope, the city can stay within its $100,000 maximum budgeted amount. So we are recommending our word to Everlast Blacktop for the 2023 CDBG sidewalk project in an amount not to exceed $132,590. And that does include the 10% contingency.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to comment, for those who aren't familiar with the Community Development Block Grant Program, this allows us to address equity in infrastructure issues within our community, because these grants are specifically for areas of our community that are low to moderate income. And so while these sidewalks were not part of the bike and pedestrian plan, which, while there were equity aspects of, that was a criteria in the plan, others were higher priority from a safety standpoint. But we're really glad that we have been the recipient. And I would also like to commend Rahad for the work that he does to afford us the opportunity to receive these funds and to do work in these neighborhoods.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, I support the modified bid there. Hate to leave free money on the table, but we're still getting 1,000 feet out of 1,400 and leaving 5,000 there. So the bulk, getting the bulk of the block grant money is important. And it's in my word, so.
Anybody?
I'll make the motion. We recommend this to council.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Beck. What's that?
You start with Wolf.
Yes, roll call, starting with Wolf.
It's a voice vote.
Yeah, we can just do a voice vote.
Voice vote. Voice vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Alderman Uwer.
So item 10, Alderman Uwer, I will turn this over to. Resolution 23-108-R, authorizing purchase of two fire department administrative vehicles. Alderman Uwer, is this yours?
No, it's not.
Oh.
Actually, City Service.
Vice, or now the chair, I guess. Chief, I think I'll turn it over to you. The obvious need for new vehicles.
Thank you, Tony. Coming to you with some frustrating news, and that is back in January, we came forth with a resolution proposal to purchase hybrid Ford Explorers. We were notified just a few weeks ago that Ford is no longer producing the hybrid 2023 municipal contract Ford Explorers. So they're not going to be, they're not going to be produced. They're not going to be available. The PD also has two on order. And I'm sure that Deputy Chief Johnson will be talking to you at some point about that. They are going to continue with the gas models, but there's a limited quantity of the gas models, and there's no guarantee that we will be able to get them. And we're obviously hoping that PD will be able to get them as they fulfill their needs a little bit greater than ours. But we do have an opportunity. The dealer that's under contract with the state bid does have, well, actually, they have five 2023 Ford F-150 pickup trucks available at the existing time that are available for purchase and do meet the fire department's needs. In some ways, they actually can be more useful to us in that we have a number of trailers. And we also, and many times in large incidents and things, have the need to haul equipment and specifically hoses, equipment that's in use, sometimes property, bicycles, things that are involved in situations. And when that occurs, we do have one pickup, which is unstaffed and back at our station, but that's really the only one we have. By having two that are administered, assigned to the administration, who also respond to these critically, critical calls or large-scale incidents, those trucks would be immediately available to us and also available to bring out the supportive equipment. Even this evening, we had a situation out at Nelson Lake Forest Preserve where we had someone hurt way out on the path, and we had to actually wait for an ATV to come and get them. This would have been a prime example to utilize an actual pickup truck to help retrieve that individuals, that individual and/or their belongings. So this opportunity does come with a slightly increased cost, but I do believe that if we waited until next year for the next contract to try to purchase the 2024 vehicles, if we were successful, the last few years have not been so successful, they would probably see, if not the same price increase, but additional price increase. The good news is that we do have the money, the funds budgeted in, in the fire department capital purchase to buy these two vehicles at this point in time. And I'm looking for your support in doing so.
Anybody? And what was, how much was budgeted?
Actually, there was $60,000 per vehicle.
That was, that was to pay for the EVs, right? So it's actually cheaper with the gas one, but.
We had, you know, and we'd hope, hope for those, you know, as administrative vehicles. We can't really use them for first responder vehicles. They just don't have the torque necessary for that. But these would enable us to kind of use them as a cross vehicle. And also, you know, we would look at, eventually with the pickup trucks, we have a couple of very, let's see, well-used pickup trucks in our ESDA fleet. And this would give us the opportunity then to progress those down. Those vehicles are actually from the 90s. And ESDA does work very diligently to maintain those. But they are, they're past their service life. But we use that now to give us the opportunity to set up that replacement program also.
These are crew cabs, so they're four doors.
Correct. And they're, you know, oftentimes, deputy chiefs will have to transport additional people, some, sometimes, you know, public members. But a lot of times, additional crew that go to the hospital in the back of the ambulance to help with critical care patients and things of that nature, so.
Just, I'm just curious if there's, there were no other options of a hybrid vehicle, you know, that wasn't Ford, you know, that we could have pursued and other options?
I know that there's no other options on the state contracts and bid. And I know that when we've looked at that in the past, there's a considerable additional expense to just going on the retail market. And there is limited availability in hybrids. They're very popular at this point in time. I can't specifically, yeah, tell you, Lee, that we haven't gone out. We did it last year, attempted to do that, and there were none available in the hybrid market. And when we looked in the gas, just straight gas model, they were considerably more expensive in the retail market than they are by the state bid contract.
I believe there was, Chief Mazza brought forward some different EV vehicles, Volvo being one, which was significantly more expensive. The Toyota had one, but it was, the rating on it was not so good. And, you know, that was, I think, if memory serves me right, they were, the police were looking at the Ford EV.
Hybrid.
Hybrid, thank you. Thank you, hybrid, yes.
I know, we worked in conjunction with the PD, and they did the extensive research on that aspect of it. And I imagine you'll, you know, hear from Deputy Chief Johnson fairly soon, as he's now in the same frustration or position I am. I just, I guess I was quicker at the computer, because I got this in at the last, the last minute on Thursday to get this to you, because of, because they're available right now. And there is a number of different, in our case, fire departments looking. And they're more utilitarian and therefore more desired by the fire department than they are the police departments.
Discussion?
I like the idea. It's cheaper, more functional. I'd say we move to approve the resolution. I'll make the motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll roll call. We're actually, voice vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you all for your consideration and support. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item number 11, Resolution 23-104R authorizing agreement with Qualtrics for resident and business experience management software, government services.
Yeah, so I can, I'll, yeah, I'll talk about this. This is something that I'm really excited about, that I think in talking with our management team and working through how it would be implemented, we're all really excited about. At its core, this allows us to better measure the experiences of people in our community, residents, businesses, commuters, our own staff, and be able to make those data-informed decisions that you will want to be making. What the software provides us is the ability to embed it on our websites, collect data at every touch point within our website. We would plan on embedding things like, how can we make this page better? So as folks are visiting this website, especially as Lori's worked on a great redesign, continuing to make it better, collect that data, and be able to make improvements along the way. We also intend to use this in a whole host of other areas, especially with its ability to distribute surveys exactly to who we want to reach out to. So we'll be uploading our existing listservs, databases, contact information we have. We're already making some improvements with how we collect data via MailChimp to be able to collect the right information, like an address, to be able to geo-target where we're sending stuff. This also provides us with the ability to track data over time, whereas our existing abilities don't necessarily provide that as well as sort of an every three-year interval. This would be more consistent. We'd have real-time dashboards that are designed both for department heads on their specific metrics and data that they want to be collecting and evaluating, as well as citywide things like what I think is mentioned in there is a Citizen Pulse survey, which is very close to what we do with our community survey. But it's something that we're able to measure routinely, continue along, track over time, look at how our decisions as a council and as a city affect our data. And ultimately, as we move forward in strategic planning and throughout that process, there is likely to be points of data on the strategic plan that we're going to want to measure. And so this sets us up to be able to actually determine where we're at and whether or not what we're doing is impactful. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this product. I'm excited for it. I think it offers us the opportunity to make more data-informed decisions, you know, whenever people are like, ask the community, well, this is a great way to do that. This is something that can be put on our website, sent out directly to people, added on QR codes on bills, posted on signage. If we're doing like a bikeway project or something, they can scan a little QR code and fill it out. But it really also gives us the ability to do it ourselves, to think about it and answer the, ask and answer the questions that we want to be asking when we're making decisions.
I just wanted to point out that this is an unbudgeted item, but, you know, with the feedback that we have been receiving from city council about more data-driven decision-making, and then also wanting to cast a wider net in terms of the opinion surveys from the community that we're able to do, we thought that this was, would be so useful that we'd like to do this sooner rather than later. And so I believe that there is sufficient room in the administration budget to compensate for purchasing this this year without, you know, the department going over budget.
There was one question I had that, so it won't require a budget amendment either.
I don't think so.
Okay. The other question I had is, how much was, did Polco cost us last year?
I believe that it was 25,000 for doing the community survey.
With this, we could do, get our own information.
Exactly.
So we're kind of replacing that.
Mm-hmm, it would be replacing it, yes. The only decision point to be made is that, and we don't need to make it right now because we're on a three-year increment for doing the community survey. Polco purchased that national community survey that is utilized by hundreds of other communities, the exact same instrument. And so it allows us the opportunity to do benchmarking against other communities. But as I mentioned, when I presented the results of the last Polco survey, I mean, I'm very proud of the fact that we ranked so high on everything, but because we ranked so high on nearly everything, it doesn't really provide us with where do we need to improve. So I think that maybe development and utilizing the Qualtrics, knowing that it is so widely accepted throughout the academic community for them conducting surveys and research, makes me feel like this will be a more useful tool for us.
We have Councilman Chanzit has his hand up.
Dan? Dan, go ahead.
Actually, Laura, I kind of just answered my question. I could take my hand down faster, but that's how I just make the mark. We were pretty satisfied with the survey results because obviously we scored high and some stuff. I just kind of ask, how did you guys find this organization? Were you aware of other municipalities that we're using, and do they solicit us and just do a better plan? Because this is light years ahead of something that we were already kind of happy with.
Yeah, so this is something that I've worked extensively with in my graduate school work, and it's very, it's basically the standard that we use in doing research at a public university that I went to, like UIC. I've used this in projects and in activities to solicit survey responses from residents in doing that. This is something that is widely used across business, across municipalities, and like I said, pretty much every single university across the state uses this to do their level of research. Whenever they do stuff with participants, with community results, it is likely through Qualtrics. And so, you know, we did look at a couple of other vendors that are in this space, the familiarity with Qualtrics, the good reputation, the ability to incorporate our branding, so that's consistent, and really just the, the quality and the reputation of the product is something that I'm, I'm very happy with and comfortable recommending to you all.
This is, like I said, this is light years ahead of what we had, what we had before, I thought was a huge leap from what we'd had previous to that. So I'm looking forward to what type of results we're going to get. One of the things that we did discuss in committee is something that I was a big supporter of, was the ability for it to be presented in Spanish, just because we have a larger Spanish-speaking population that would be more likely to respond to survey results if it was made available bilingual. Do we have that ability with this type of research as well? Are we able to continue to reach out to people that don't have English as their first language to provide data for us?
Yeah, it has substantial translation options. It's not, it's, I think, if I recall, it's through like a Google Translate type thing, so it may not be perfect, but it does offer a substantial amount of translation opportunities. And with any person using likely a, like a different keyboard or something like that, or, you know, if they have like a Google Translate on their browser or something that many websites may have, it would pick that up too. So it will be accessible in multiple languages.
Awesome. This is absolutely fantastic. I really appreciate the growth here. Thank you.
Alderman, you're.
Yeah, I'm actually very familiar with Qualtrics, have seen their products and used their products. Will this, does the package we're looking at include the AI sentiment where it's getting the gut feeling of what people are trying to say?
Yes, and so in our conversations with the vendor, in our conversations with, sort of seeing what's out there, that was one of the main things that we looked at. With our current community survey, what we got back with regard to written comments was essentially an Excel spreadsheet with very limited analysis, and it was on staff to have to go through and try to pick out things left and right. What this will do is, so if a resident fills out a survey or goes, there will be an option for them to either submit an audio response, or I believe they're coming online now with a video response, and with that, you're able to extract a lot more information and sentiment than you would with text. Because when people talk, when people speak, the inflection, the way that it's all able to gather that. And so, for example, what we're able to extract out of that is, we would know, for example, if residents are submitting stuff to us talking about garbage or talking about this, and then we're able to use that data and see whether they're talking positively or negatively, what information regarding that issue is coming up more often, and really allow us to dig deeper into what the core issues at heart are. And so that is an option that people can choose to do. It's not obviously required by any means, but it's an option that does exist.
It should exist as well in the language sentiment of how, what they're typing out, that you would have a survey and be able to say, you'd be able to have, people are angry about the garbage pickup just by their texts. You don't, it shouldn't require the votes, the video or the audio. So it should have that, which is actually super cool, because then you get the idea that you don't have to read through everything. You can say, oh, on garbage collection, people are, you know, angry about it. On this, people are very happy about it, without having to read everything, and you see different things. It's pretty fascinating when you, when you see that happen, so. This is great, because, especially with the ability to go and, you know, do, target the pulse surveys, where you don't have to survey everybody, but you can just, hey, we're going to hit 1,000 people, and if you get 10%, you're getting something, and then you go hit, you do something, you make a change, and you go ask 1,000 people six months later, did the change resonate? Doesn't have to be the same 1,000 people, but it's representative, and that's what, that's what a lot of companies are going to, is more that pulse survey rather than the three-year employee survey, which is overwhelming because it's so long, the pulse surveys can be like three questions, and people are much more likely to answer that, so.
And to address one of the points you brought up, we have the ability to send out as many as we want. We're only, so what we have is 10,000 total responses a year. That's the plan we chose to look at based on pricing and what we, at least for year one, this is a one-year contract. If it goes well, we can obviously expand and build out more. But we can send it out as many times as we want. We only get dinged, if you will, when they submit it. So that was another thing that really appealed to us, is the ability to sort of say, well, if we hit our cap, it's because 10,000 responses came back, and that's useful data, we hope.
Yes, I'm in favor of it. I think you shouldn't have to come back for the budget amendment. I would just say, please don't, just find something else, and you would say, we'll push to next year, because then that would, I don't want to come back in November and say, hey, we need an extra 10 grand for something, and we could just push it at that point.
Dan? Are you still voting for Eternal Flame?
Yikes.
Hand down.
Mark, I'd like your insight, but I don't think we need AI to know that people aren't happy with the garbage contract. Okay, anybody else? I think we're good. Does somebody want to make a motion? Oh, no, this, yeah.
I'd move we send Resolution 23-104R Qualtrics, or authorize agreement with Qualtrics for resident and business experience management with a positive recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Beck, votes, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice habit, thank you. Good stuff, Max. All right, item number 12, discussion, deep well number 10 failure and planned repairs. Gary, now for the bad news.
A little unfortunate news this evening, and really just inform council of this emergency and what we've, steps we've taken. We did lose 10, well number 10, in early August. We've done diagnosis on that. We have now pulled the well, and based on the findings, the motor itself did experience an electrical failure, likely a power surge. The top and bottom motor sections, so if you picture two sections coming together, they actually separated by about a half an inch, which obviously that's not supposed to happen, and likely was caused by heat and pressure of a power surge, which probably our best guess is that the motor seal was compromised due to a lightning strike. So it's very well, the couple of you that were there tonight, you just saw that wellhead sticking out of the ground, which is kind of a half dome shape. Very possible lightning struck, struck that and ended up damaging the motor. So we do have an estimate in the range of 180 to 200,000 dollars to pull the motor and well and pump assembly. They inspected that already, and now we are going to proceed forward with an exchange motor, which basically all the internal components are brand new. The only thing that they reuse is the external case, and that's approximately 30, 40,000 dollars cheaper than a brand-new motor. But in this case, it's delivery of about 12 weeks or about three months, as opposed to six months to a year. So given that we do need to have this deep well functional prior to next summer's hot weather, we do need to move forward. Engineering Enterprises, who is our consultant on a number of water different, number of water projects, did recommend that we proceed with the refurbished motor. So we're really informing council that that is the steps that we have taken. We are proceeding forward, and unfortunately, we will need to come back to you with a budget amendment to account for the unanticipated emergency expense, and that'll happen at a future date, once we know what the final numbers will be.
Gary, when did this, when did we put this in?
When, oh, so the original well itself is going on 20 some odd years old now, but it was last refurbished only a year ago. So it's not uncommon about every five to seven years to pull a pump and a motor and refurbish them and put them back in the ground again. So it was last done just a year ago, and that's why we thought initially it would be a warranty issue when we lost the motor, or at least we had our fingers crossed. And, but a lightning strike isn't a warranty issue, so.
What's the level of confidence, like 98% it's lightning strike? I mean, and who determines that?
The symptoms all indicate that, yes. Yeah, there's nothing, until, now there is, there is, they still have to tear apart the motor, and if something were to, they, all of a sudden, they open up the motor and they find a big chunk of metal was missing, yes, then we, then we have a different scenario on our hands, but there's nothing that indicates that's the case right now.
Alderman, you're.
Based on that, is there any reason to put lightning rods on all our wellheads there?
I've asked that question, and that's something I still haven't gotten an answer to, so yes, it's something that we will look, look into. It's not usual, I mean, it'd be an unusual thing, but it's, but it is, is an interesting question.
It is a piece of steel sitting there, so if lightning's going to strike the ground, then it's, hey, there's a good spot, so.
Yep, no, I hear what you're saying. We'd have to do a lightning protection system with a ground grid, basically, is what you'd have to do.
I know you said no warranty, but is there, there's no way to have any type of an insurance claim for this?
The city could, could submit for an insurance claim, and that's something we can, we probably will look into. That'll be a, really a Peggy Colby question as to the economics of pursuing a claim versus just paying for it.
Who else? Okay, there's no action. I appreciate the.
There's no action this evening. We will come back for you, with you on that one.
Now on to item 13, another discussion, customer self-generation status updates.
It's been about a year now since the net billing policy went into effect. That first went into effect for electric bills issued after August 1st of 2022. Obviously, we've just passed August 1st again. City council did approve a transition factor, if you recall, which was meant to help as we transitioned away from paying full retail rates to generation, to now paying wholesale rates. That transition factor was meant to help make that transition. And as it turns out, and I had a couple of paragraphs in my original memo related to costs, but they got so filled with numbers that they got to be confusing, so I just made my memo simpler. As it turns out, wholesale prices, as you, as you know, have actually kind of, well, you may know, they've gone up over the past year, such that the transition was such that it actually is now higher than our retail. So the transition factor hasn't come into play because we are able to pay full retail for, for the electric generator, because that's, that right now is less than the wholesale when you include the wholesale plus the transition factor. Once the transition factor falls off, then the wholesale will be, will be less. We did increase the number of systems over the last year, residential systems, by 16. 16 customers have put in a residential system over the last year. And again, there's currently a total of 471 kilowatts of self-generation on our system, and that actually is self-generation of all, both residential and the few commercial, industrial ones that we have, so. As I said in the last paragraph, we are monitoring EV charger installations as well as self-generation to keep an eye on our local infrastructure and to make sure that, you know, if we need to make improvements in the future, we certainly can do that. So with that, I'll just turn over in case anyone has any questions.
Are we even close to that 20% of our total peak usage for the transition factor?
No, no. Well, at 471 kilowatts, we're, we're not anywhere near there. Well, at 471 kilowatts, um, we're, we're, we're not anywhere near there. Yeah, we're going to have to, we have lots, we're, we're going to, the transition factor's going to disappear long before we'd reach the 20% threshold.
Yes, hold on a minute, Vogels.
Is there any chance that we could discuss bringing back nut metering since we are not close to that 20%?
That is a discussion for the other 13 people around the table.
It costs households a dollar a year to reimburse solar customers. It's an impact, um, on their repayment when we have this transition factor and they go to just receiving wholesale rate. So Geneva, you know, recently looked at getting rid of nut metering, decided not to because they have a small number of self-generating residences. Um, just wanted to open up the discussion and see if anyone is interested. It's an outsized impact on the solar customers, um, who are helping us towards our goal of being, uh, renewable by 2050, right? That's the goal?
The state's goal.
The state's goal, sorry, not ours, but one we will generally have to adhere to, right?
I think it's a great conversation. It was good last time. I think we've got some new, one new person at least, um, to have it. So a, a couple, I, I.
Could I ask Bob for his PowerPoint?
I'm sure you do. Um, so I'm, I'm not against it. It's good education just all around, uh, on how it works. So whether, whether or not we go with it or not, it's still, I think, a discussion, but.
Well, one thing to consider is that we have not had the truly explosive growth in the residential self-generation and as far as, as far as the state of Illinois is concerned, nut metering sunsets as of 2024 anyway, and anyone who is grandfathered in is able to take advantage of that. So that is something, a gift we could give our residents who are early adopters with solar. We're not at scary numbers as of yet. Um, maybe this is something just for residences, maybe not for industrial. I'm not sure how that would all work, um, but something to consider possibly.
Yes.
I'm still in support of bringing it back. Um, as you heard from residents that came up and, and vocalized, just looking at plans for houses now and they don't see solar panels, that's a thing. Like in Batavia, when we're, when we're signaling out that we are, I won't say that we're anti-solar, although out on the streets that there are some people out there that very much consider the city of Batavia to be anti-solar based on these policies. So, um, I think it's a good signal to reverse if we can. I don't think it's going to have a tremendous impact on our electric rates, but it's moving us in the right direction. Um, I also think that, you know, to your last point, Gary, and your memo about needing to monitor the situation and plan for going forward, I think the time to start having those plan, planning meetings is now. Like, we can't pretend like it's not going to happen. We know at some point we're going to have to transition. There's going to be investments, like let's, let's start planning now. Let's figuring out where that revenue is coming from. Let's upgrade our systems. Let's, let's do it.
Yeah, we were already actually on top of that and I had, I had worked with Max, um, to try and get, um, the very first step in that, we were going to get graduate student and to start looking at that topic. And this fall, they decided not to run that program, but they may in the spring. Is that the latest?
Yeah, we're definitely. Basically what this is, is Gary alluded to, is we were going to work with the UIC capstone program, which is something I participated in as a student. Um, you get a group of four or five graduate students that are in their last semester. Um, there's no cost to it as well. Um, but what it would be is basically to do a lot of brainstorming and that front-end research to sort of give us a couple of paths we can look more into before we get into like doing engineering and more in-depth paid studies. Um, but that, they, due to just enrollment levels and the fluctuation year to year, they are not offering it this fall, this current fall. We do expect that they'll be back in the spring and the guy who runs it is my former professor, so I'm very close with, and we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back to you and that's something we're still keeping our eyes on.
That's awesome. That makes me very happy. Thank you.
We can bring that general topic of net metering back for a discussion in a future cow meeting.
Yeah, and I, I would almost, I don't know if we can combine it, but that, that's a, an overall electric update would be great.
That'll have to move at its own pace because that's not going to happen till next spring.
Right.
So.
Now would, like a, a summary of where we're at. I mean, I'm, I'm just curious as to, uh, you know, what's shifted, uh, if anything, from, uh, commercial use, you know, where we're at there, where we're at, uh, influx of electric cars, has that helped us where, our usage versus, uh, how much we're putting onto the, into the market? Um, and, and overall update, I think would be great, um, for that too. But I don't know if you want to tie that in with Max's thing, uh, I mean, that's not till spring, but.
I can do that. I can report that our peak load so far this year is in the upper 70s, which at one point in time, the peak load was over 100. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, I, I will, I can certainly do that in overall system summary as well.
The next two days.
Well, we've had, and I wish that was the case, but we've had strings of hot weather already. And so I doubt we're going to go from 70 to 100 even in the next couple of days. That, that just tells me our peak is, is, is continuing to decline.
Gary, I want to clarify something. Um, I did not like retain Bob's PowerPoint to memory completely, but when we have those peak days, when we have solar customers spread out around town, that helps ease the stress on the grid, correct?
Uh, unless those solar customers have air conditioning going, then they may just be consuming all their own energy behind the meter.
We, I know that we.
And then we don't have to supply them with energy, so.
Right, you don't have to supply them with energy. I know on peak days like that, we have, um, I have solar panels for anyone that doesn't know.
No, that's, that's the days, it's sunny and that's the, that's the peak solar.
That helps the, yeah, so it's peak solar. We're still sending a little bit back to the grid, but.
Not on those days.
Not on those days?
No.
Okay.
No, not on those days. Those days, those are, there are few peak days that we have throughout the year, megawatt hour-wise, not megawatt-wise, but, but total consumption-wise where we're actually bringing megawatt hours in.
But does it help the grid not having those homes, like they're supplying? Okay, so it is helpful.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it was made mention that there is a PowerPoint that goes into greater detail of the subject that was presented, presented last year. Could I, could you send that to me?
It wasn't presented by us.
It's a private citizen.
Yeah, it wasn't anything we prepared.
I haven't.
If I can get a copy of that, it would be helpful for my own purposes. Thank you.
That's great. Anybody else?
That meeting should be available from B8 TV.
You're welcome.
You get it.
Three hours over the course of two meetings.
Do it again.
I have a question, comment, I don't remember what it, what it is, but, um, as, as I guess Prairie State, that the, are we going to be getting a reduction at some point of what they can provide us, as I recall?
Well, NMPA, NMPA is under an obligation through our power sales agreement because we have the bonds to pay. NMPA provides us with 55 megawatts of power, whether Prairie State's running or not. So we will, we will continue to receive 55 megawatts of power through the end of our arrangement with NMPA.
So I think one of the original thoughts I had had about, when we were talking about solar panels in the city at some point was, um, utilizing like, and I know the city doesn't, but I don't know if we've talked with the school district about the summertime and then being able to provide. I know that if we can, um, not, if we can avoid having to redistribute that power up, uh, past those transformers, we wouldn't have to upgrade those systems in those areas. Have we had any discussions? I know that they may or may not be able to get some sort of credits.
We don't have those issues though right now.
Okay.
I mean, we don't, we don't have a need for system improvements right now and any installation of solar just gives more megawatt hours that we're selling back into the, into the wholesale market.
Unless, yeah, so unless, unless something happens and we don't get that 55 megawatts and we need to provide more than that.
If we could, if we could have solar from residents run only during those peak periods where we're not selling into the market, then it would be completely beneficial for both sides. But the residents want to run their solar 24, not 24/7, but seven days a week.
Yeah.
And, and so during the all other times, it's not beneficial to us because we're just pushing electrons back to the wholesale market.
It's an idea for the future if something were to change.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Item 14, strategic plan update.
And that was Max as well.
Hello, let me pull this up, turn my screen. Alrighty, so as you all know, we met a couple of weeks ago to do our visioning activity. That is what led us to this. Um, we've been working internally to basically take all those pieces of data, the sticker activity, all the little stuff you put on there and transform that into, um, actual statements and actual outcomes. So as I said, we held a workshop identifying the high-level priorities and elements of successful Batavia. Um, those make up the foundations of the outcomes that you'll see in a bit. Um, and what we're going to do from here is we're going to work with staffs, stakeholders and all of you to identify policies and practices that, um, can be included in the strategic plan and aligned with the strategic plan, um, basically ensuring that existing operations and existing programs are viewed strategically through that plan, through that lens, as well as what we need to do additionally or change to kind of keep us moving forward on that. What we'll be doing is, and I'll talk about this a bit later, once we sort of finalize these action plans, uh, we'll come back to you all, um, whether that be a cow meeting or a, or a special workshop, we'll, we'll determine at, at the appropriate time, um, depending on how much there's to discuss and what that timing looks like. Um, but that's sort of where we were and where we're going. As a reminder, that you might recall this presentation, um, right now we're at the end outcomes, where we want to be, what our big picture vision is, um, mission, strategic goals, long-term measures, et cetera. From here, we're going to work backwards, look at program activities, program inputs, outputs, et cetera, um, and basically build out how we get from where we're at to where we want to be going, which are those big picture outcome statements. So with that in mind, we, we did take a look at our mission and vision statements and made sure that they reflected our updated values and what we talked about during that activity. And so this was the only thing that really has two alternatives I want to get some feedback on. As it stands right now, our current mission statement is to enhance the quality of life within our community through the development and delivery of reliable and efficient municipal services in a fiscally responsible manner. A lot of what you provided is to take it a little bit further, look at it a little bit more holistically and, uh, bigger picture. And so what that means is, you know, you'll see things in there in both statements like vibrant, sustainable, safe, inclusive. These are things that weren't necessarily represented in the current mission statement. Um, we also include an element of how we do it, how we're working to achieve our mission. Um, so that's where that second part comes in. Um, so like you'll see with the first one, we say we do this together with residents and businesses. That was some of the points of collaboration was a point brought up. Cultivate trust, transparency and open engagement was another point brought up throughout the activity. Um, and then as well, collaborative efforts and effective governance, we shape a filter that fuses, or fills us with pride in our community. That's the first statement option. Um, and then there's the second one, which is the city of Batavia is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life by delivering reliable and efficient municipal services. So that keeps basically the current mission statement as is, but then adds in the element of how. Together with residents and businesses, we foster a vibrant, sustainable, inclusive environment built on trust, transparency and open engagement. Through collaborative efforts and effective government, governance, we shape a future that fills us with pride, empowering and cherished community for generations to come. So it gets a little bit more forward-thinking, gets a little bit looking at the fact that when we're making decisions, when we're building this plan, it takes a look at where we're at now, but where we want to be going, what that looks like and how that works. So with regard to this, um, like I said, we're going to be working on this over time. Nothing's final at this stage. Anyone have any strong preferences toward either one? Any general comments on the mission statement? I can take a quick straw poll on it if we just want to do, you know, one or two, um, like it's, it's up to you how we want to do that.
I don't want to belabor this point too much, but I'm used to mission statements being very succinct. So both of those get very wordy. Mission statements are usually like a sentence or maybe two. And so then it just gets into, number two is like super long, um, and it's just supposed to be really succinct and just do that. And then you get a lot of that out of your vision that is supporting your mission, um, where the worriedness comes in more in your vision. So that's my only comment on it. It just, I don't want to get super verbose that people are like, they forgot what we already started talking about by the time they get to the end of it.
Yeah, and the struggle with that and trying to cut it down is to incorporate all the values and stuff that you, you all mentioned is important. Trying to make sure that that's reflected does get a little wordy and so that's, you know, why, why I presented two alternatives to try to still incorporate everything you mentioned and included in your mission and what you value, um, but then also, um, trying to keep it succinct, like you said.
We have all those value statements too, which are separate and supportive of mission.
What, it, it all comes together within the mission. And, and so those values are reflected not just in the value statement, within the core mission. Um, so that, yeah, I guess the point is that trying, we definitely could be cut if you have specific, or like specific points that, um, feel repetitive, but like I said, it's designed to sort of incorporate all those ideas and understand that while we want it to be short, we don't want it to be, um, short to the point of missing out on topics or missing out on concepts.
Philosophical difference on.
I understand.
On missions, so I, like I said, I'm not going to belabor it. I'm not going to argue about it too much because it's, it's, um, probably 90% of people that work for a company don't pay attention to the mission and business statements and probably 95% of our residents aren't going to pay attention to this. It just, it's, it's nice to have, but I'm not going to drag on the meeting to do it, just kind of my thoughts.
I kind of agree, but I'd like number two with everything it says, but then in terms of like everything that's up there, I still concur.
Incorporate all the stuff we were talking about and other portions, but, I, because I like everything that's in number two. I just think the current one's straight into the point.
I'll agree with Mark. I, I think that this mission statement needs to be short, to the point, and that's all it needs to be. And then the rest of it supports it. So I, I know we went through this, the last time we went through and, and came up with the current mission statement we have, it, it's just, I feel like even the first one, the first alternate, I feel like the last sentence just repeats what came before that. So I'm okay with that, but I really think it just needs to be short and simple.
And like I said, this isn't final at any stage, so we can come back and you'll be obviously approving stuff and we'll be discussing this further. Um, so yeah, I'll, we, we can workshop it some more, um, if that's sort of the consensus on the council is to sort of keep the gist of it, if that's sort of where we're at, but cut it down where we can and make it more succinct while still not. Is that where folks, yeah. Okay.
Can I go next?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, Max, I had let you know this earlier. I really appreciate, um, the, the energy you're bringing into this and the time you've put into this and I think your expertise is showing and, um, I really appreciate that. Um, I, I like the alternative, I, I like both alternatives a lot, um, but to take into what other people in council are saying, you know, alternative one, um, is a little less overwhelming, maybe for, to the, whoever is going to take the time to.
Yeah.
Click it on the website and read it. Um, but I just really appreciate that you took something that we've had for years and you've taken it to the next level and thank you.
So if folks kind of agree, let me know about this, we can sort of move forward with one as the baseline, tweak it a little bit, update it, make sure that it's cut down and kind of rework it throughout the process. Is that sort of where folks are thinking?
I agree. I think they're both great and, uh, but if we can, I mean, my training in, in this is more succinct, but I mean, it's, it's, it's a debatable thing.
It is something I am working on. My background was in public relations where wordiness helps if you have to fill out a press release. Um, so I, I totally understand the point and I totally understand where you're coming from, but. but we can take, if it's sort of the general consensus, is to take one and kind of workshop it, cut it down a little bit, and really make sure that every word in there is important. Is that sort of... show of hands, anyone disagree? Okay, then we will do that for that. So like I said, then we sort of get to the point of the vision statement, which I can't remember. I think it was either Mark or Chris said that, basically, it incorporates all the other things. This is... the way you should view this is, and I encourage you at the workshop, is when Batavia is fully successful, it should be... This is essentially the answer to that question. A thriving, inclusive, sustainable community, desirous place to live, work, and enjoy; friendliness, trustworthiness, transparent communication, effective governance; our strategic priorities, which we'll talk about in a minute; foster a vibrant, diverse, and successful community through thoughtful and planned actions that advance our vision, that gets to the alignment and getting things together and on the same page; we are committed to providing outstanding, efficient, and reliable services through modern solutions that cater to our residents and businesses; we achieve this through collaboration, community engagement, and responsible planning, making Batavia even more socially, fiscally, and environmentally responsible, leading the way in creating a better future for us all. And that is essentially our answer to the question of what does Batavia look like when it's fully successful. That's kind of how I like to view this, and it gives us, like I said earlier, it's that vision. It's what we're working towards. When we have a question of where we should be going, this is kind of what we want that to be. How we get there is a discussion, and that's the whole next part of the process. But that's sort of the big picture of where you're telling us to go.
I'd like to live in this Batavia.
I know, me too. I like Batavia a lot.
That is... that's the goal, is this should fill you with a level of pride, and that this is, you know, if you think back to maybe why you ran for council, why you chose public service or something, something along those lines that gets that little spark back. That's what I... that's what we're trying to evoke with a vision statement, is that it should fill you with a level of pride in your community, and that when someone asks, "What are you working towards?", you can point to it and go, "That."
Sorry, I know you put a lot of work into this. I'm just going to kind of double down on the succinctness of it. I mean, you look at vision statements of some of the most well-known brands in the world, and they're like, one sentence, and even significantly shorter than ours. I like all the different statements we have that are out there on the site about the different pieces of this. The statement is... the statement is actually unachievable. If you look at the vision statements of top companies, they can't make their... it's a vision that... this would be like incredible-type thing. So our vision statement is not achievable. It's something that we're striving to get towards, but you'll actually never meet your vision statement. So, I think we pulled these things out and those other statements that we have that back up the vision, but I think it's... frankly, ours is too long right now, if you look at, like, the best vision statements out there, so that's...
Oh no, we're not a very well-known brand, so like, well-known brands can lean on the fact that they're well-known, and their vision statement doesn't have to describe that.
But they started those vision statements before they were a well-known brand. So, it's those things that exist before they were who they are, and but they made that their vision as something that is bold and relatively unachievable. It's just very wordy, is the only thing that comes out of these that is just... I won't read it all. Too long didn't read. I mean, that's a thing all over the internet that you just... you lose people, I think, and I think it needs to be shorter, so...
You maybe almost turned it into a bulleted list, like, because a lot of this is just a series of like, list statements as it is. You know, we envisioned Batavia as known for friendliness, trustworthiness, transparent communication, because that could deliver the same message in a more human-readable format.
That's kind of what we get to with the next section of what I'll talk about, is the strategic priorities or our outcomes. The whole idea is the outcomes move us toward this, to that point of being achievable. In some ways, it's designed to never be fully achievable. It's designed to be something that is consistently striving for, whereas what we'll have in the plan is intermediate goals along the way that get us toward this path, but it's never-ending. It's always ongoing. It's always the consistent deliberate efforts to create this vision of what we want. And so, you know, that's a philosophical thing, is to make... is to sort of decide whether you can actually achieve it, or if it's a striving thing that you look forward to, that when you're questioning, you know, what is the long-term vision, what does that look like? You can kind of go, "All right, does it get us here? Does it align with this?" So that's sort of the concept behind it. But it also sends the message of what it... like, what are all of our priority areas and our strategic outcomes designed to achieve? So I mean, it can... it could be broken down into bullet statements. That's kind of what the next part gets to. But from that point, you know, this is designed not just as a external-facing document for our residents and for our community, but it's also going to be used as a internal plan for how we align things, how we view things, how we align budgets, staffing, priorities, et cetera. So to the extent that everything we do internally aligns with this, that's kind of the lens through which we're going to be viewing this all.
I believe Dan has his hand up. Dan?
Thanks. So I was always told to view a vision statement like it's the answers to a test. It's the answers to all of the exams for the whole class. And it's the truth. It's 100% accurate. It's the truth. And to your point, Max, that's probably the nail in the head, is why we might have a disconnect with it being a little verbose. It's also to be used against us, by us, when we've lost our way. Sometimes we will get so far in the weeds on an issue, and we need to be reminded of, you know, what is it we're working on. Sometimes a vision statement is the thing that unites us all again, whether it is someone in utility billing all the way up to an elected official. So it is important to have some of these reminders in here. Even though we think we know them, sometimes it's just nice to read it, because you want to be all on the same page. So I do appreciate the longer version of it, understanding that 99.9% of the time, it's going to be when we need to look at the North Star again, and remember, oh, that's right, we're headed in this direction, and that's why we need this.
Exactly.
Well, I would agree that two paragraphs is too much, but it says a lot. There's no doubt about it. It's inspiring, so I think there could be some... A goal to try to get that same thing, message across in less words, but if not, it does what it does.
As you come away from tonight's discussion, please feel free to workshop it and send me ideas. This is a collaborative process. I'm open to suggestions. These are just sort of the baseline of where we go from here.
Appreciate that. No, it's a great, great summary.
So a couple more things. I'll try to be quick through these. Like I said, these are how we're going to be actually... These are what our sort of like intermediate outcomes are. These are our more departmental, programmatic, that align to that vision statement. So there's 10 areas: trustworthiness, transparency, vibrant and diverse community, environmental leadership and sustainability, safety and well-being, effective governance and service delivery, economic development and local business support, innovation and technological advancement, community engagement and inclusion, sustainable infrastructure and development, and then regional connectivity and transportation. So I will be asking for a level of approval of these to move forward, and the reason is, is because this is sort of what we're going to be working on action-plan-wise. What existing activities are we doing, what programs, what budgets, et cetera, get us there already, so that we're viewing existing programs and policies through that strategic lens to get us to these desired outcomes? But then also, what we'll be doing, and I'll talk about this in a minute, is talking with all of our staff, our stakeholders, our elected officials, and seeing, what else do we need to be doing? If what we're doing now isn't getting us along that path, or isn't putting enough resources based on, you know, our collaborative discussions and whatnot, we'll have those conversations and include them in the plan of how we actually get there. So all of these align with the activity we did and sort of visioning what the future of Batavia looks like. And again, it's answering the question of when we're successful in things like trustworthiness and transparency, those statements should ring true. It's something we're striving for. It's something that will devise measures along the way to actually tell us whether or not we're achieving our desired goals. But with regards to trustworthiness and transparency, Batavia is a city that is known for building trust through authentic and transparent communication with our residents. Through clear expectations, communication, and honest governance, we foster a community where everyone is heard and valued. So that's our, essentially, our outcome desired. You know, we go back to the statement, the end outcome, it's that. Then we talk about vibrant and diverse community. Batavia has multiple downtown, high-density residential areas where diverse people come together to form a lively and inclusive community. We aim to enhance the riverfront, making it a thriving business, residential, and recreational hub that reflects the excellence of our community. Batavia is a model of environmental leadership, striving for carbon-neutral energy sources and promoting innovative sustainability measures. Our city is well-known for its dedication to energy efficiency, waste reduction programs, and sustainable infrastructure design that fosters future growth. For Batavia, safety and well-being are vital. Thoughtful and intentional planning and design, we achieve zero-traffic fatalities and serious injuries. Residents are safe, cared for, and confident in their community's ability to ensure their security, no matter what affects us. We provide robust support for our first responders and staff, allowing them to keep everyone safe. And then we get to effective government, governance, and service delivery. Batavia optimizes city services and creates efficient government that allows us... or allows easy engagement with city services and staff. By investing in the use of data, we identify and address issues properly, communicate our actions clearly, and provide transparency on how funds are spent to achieve Batavia's vision. So with regard to these five, yeah, there's five up there, thoughts, comments, this should generally reflect what you put in the data in that activity. I sent around that matrix as well to sort of get us what that actual data looked like. But this is essentially the culmination of that activity, the top priorities, making it into these statements, and ultimately looking at it and trying to dissolve, or take all those priorities and activities and concepts you put together and distill it down into sort of 10 distinct areas, making sure that everything you identified as a top priority, that there was high agreement on, makes its way in here somewhere. Thoughts?
I like it. There's our mission. We provide those five things.
Yes, there's the five. And like I said, these are the things that... I'll talk about them in a minute, but these are what we're going to be working on. These are our internal North Stars from when we talk about management, department heads, our staff is... our frontline staff as well. They can look at these and go, "All right, are my... how are my activities, my day-to-day work, looking toward these outcomes?" And it allows people to view their work in the context of something bigger, something bigger picture, and something that has a clear outcome and goal to it. So that's sort of how these will be viewed. And my question for you all is, are you all... is this what you sort of think? Is this what you're coming out of that activity aligning generally with what you thought would be? Because from here, these are going to be a little bit more locked in place than the vision or mission statement, because these are going to be our actual outcomes that we're going to be prepping and planning for, and making sure that our activities, our programs, our policies actually get us there. And that basically, everything we do is in some way categorized into these 10 statements. And so with regard to these first five, thoughts?
What I really like about them is it really doesn't fall in one department. It's something that every department can
Exactly.
work towards and be a part of, whether there's a particular project that they're working on or collaborating cross-functionally.
And like I'll explain with our concept for staff engagement, that's really something that we're hoping to build upon, is the fact that to achieve all these outcomes, it's not just a public works issue, or a community development issue, or a fire department issue. It's everyone. It's getting everyone, understanding that to achieve these sorts of outcomes, we have to work together, that the silos that do exist in most organizations inhibit our ability to achieve these outcomes, and that the way we're planning on going about actually engaging staff is really designed to help tear down those silos as well.
Sometimes what can happen is if you're working on a particular project that you're very close to, sometimes having that outside feedback from somebody that doesn't even work in that department, they may see something differently that provides, you know, a great solution that you can't think of it because you're so close to it.
Exactly. And that gets to the point of, you know, all of our staff have fantastic ideas, and I think we all work together and contribute across departments and all that already. Just continuing to take that further and understand that, you know, when we're talking about a community development project, or a public works, or anything like that, you know, it is extremely common to have someone who may not work within an everyday basis still go, "Hey, I've got an idea," or "Here's how..." "Hey, we tried this over there. It might be helpful for you there." So that sort of collaboration, that cross-departmental work, is something that this is also supposed to build and continue to expand upon. So, I do want to move on to the next quick straw poll. Are we good to plan and make our activities align with these? Any objections, any other comments you want us to have with these five? Okay, so we'll move forward with these, and we'll work on actually making them happen. So then there's the next set, economic development and local business support. Batavia is a beacon for economic growth, inspiring new businesses and restaurants to establish themselves here, and for existing businesses to grow here. We prioritize and support small and local businesses, fostering an environment that encourages entrepreneurship and prosperity, innovation and technological advancement. Batavia uses innovation and technological advancement to support creative problem-solving and experimentation to address challenges effectively. Batavia will be known for utilizing... it's getting late. Modern equipment and technology to deliver the best services to all of our residents. Community engagement and inclusion. Batavia is a city where everyone works together. This means that the community, city council, and city staff work together as a unified team, building strong relationships based on mutual respect and support. We ensure that our city staff and elected officials reflect the diversity and makeup of our community. Sustainable infrastructure and development. Batavia develops in a sustainable and efficient manner through innovative zoning and development practices. Through prioritizing redevelopment of aging properties and optimizing the use of riverfront areas, we create balanced and resilient infrastructure for future generations. And then regional connectivity and transportation. Batavia is regionally connected through multiple transportation options, including active transportation and transit. We work with regional partners to achieve seamless access and mobility throughout the tri-city region. So like with the other five, these are our outcomes on these topics. They align with what you all identified as what you want us to be doing, so happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
On the sustainable infrastructure and development, I think what I'm thinking of was sustainable infrastructure, because it's a thing we've talked about since I've been on council and probably before, is the utilities. That nothing in here says that we're going to make sure that we've, you know, that we're supporting streets and electric and everything to ensure that we lessen the power outages. I know it's not really that bad, but that we ensure that our... all of our water mains and everything are going to be working, because we're an old city. And so there's... so I see this as the infrastructure of buildings, not so much the infrastructure of what we don't see. And I know that that's been a big topic, and I thought that was one of those things we kind of talked about in the offsite.
Yeah, that concept sort of makes its way through multiple different areas of these outcomes. But one of the great things about having this conversation tonight is now we can clarify, and what we'll do is, this may be our outcome, but within our sections, we're going to have specific measurable plans along the way, sub-goals of like, you know, limiting power outages and all these things. That may fall under like... ultimately, that may fall under something like service delivery. We'll talk about that and sort of think about how each of our things each connect to there. But there will absolutely be a place for those sorts of things, and that is something that shows up on our matrix, and we'll go back and cross-check that to make sure that those are actually reflected in our strategic plan. Okay. Any other questions? Quick straw poll? Good? Okay. And then, we didn't make any real changes to the value statement. What you guys put generally aligns with what you guys had. I looked for anything to be added or changed, but there really just wasn't anything. So if you're okay with your current value statement, we'll keep it and kind of keep that through from strategic plan to strategic plan. Okay, and then, so like I said, our plan is to engage everyone. That's really the next step of this. We have our outcomes. We have our big-picture ideas of what we're trying to accomplish. And then where we're going to go from here is... And then where we're going to go from here is sort of hold a couple of mini-conferences, is how I'm calling them, they're really just themed meetings more or less internally. Basically what we'll be doing is having a discussion about each of those outcomes. So, you know, we'll have the department who kind of more owns that, who may be more likely to be involved with that, will be there, but we're also going to be opening this up to all staff. We want people who may not necessarily work with that topic every day, but have ideas about government, about city service delivery and all of that, to be able to stop by, see how different departments work together, how it's required. So like I mentioned, that silo breaking down, that's what this gets at, is seeing how one issue touches so many different departments. So what we'll basically be doing is kind of doing a half-day mini-conference for grouping them together into like areas. We'll probably be doing them in the council chambers, we'll have a follow-up survey for those who maybe have additional ideas or whatnot. For example, when we're discussing things like economic development, we'll be inviting folks like the chamber, main street board, et cetera, to make sure that as we develop these plans, and as they may be implemented in conjunction with our stakeholders, that they have a role in helping to develop the plans. And so you're all, I'll obviously be sending out an email about all of this, and you'll be all on that as well, but if you do want to attend any of these sessions, please just sort of do a quick RSVP, so if we get more than four, I can kind of coordinate amongst you all, so we're not breaking any laws here. But that's sort of the, the gist of how we're going to go about doing it. Just a couple of key outcomes from these mini-conferences and what we're hoping to accomplish. Staff and stakeholders advise, or identify strategic initiatives that require collaboration across departments, breaking down silos and fostering that collaboration. Staff and stakeholders are provided an opportunity to share those ideas and how to achieve those desired outcomes, and then that ownership over that as, you know, if someone comes up with an idea, if it's something they really care about, want to see through and implement, give staff a level of ownership, which does things like boost retention, make folks happy, give, give a real sense of purpose within that work. Ideas presented are going to align with the whole thing. I discussed in our, in our planning meeting in our workshop, the concept of logic models, those will be included as well. And then ultimately, as we implement the plan, having the stakeholders and the organizations that are going to be working with us on implementation, having them be in that front part, makes it so we're not really surprising anyone with what we're, we're hoping to accomplish. All right, that is all I have. Like I said, I'll be in frequent communication, now is where it gets really busy and really fun. We're going to be holding these, these meetings. I'm looking forward to the conversations we'll have with staff. We did something similar already with the fire department in terms of looking at outcomes and looking how we can involve all staff to do that. We had some truly fantastic conversations with our frontline firefighters and learning more about how we can improve things. And so seeing how that process worked with the fire department, seeing how energized, excited, and engaged folks were, I have high hopes for the next stage with working with all of our staff as well. All right.
Thanks, Max.
No problem.
To double down on what Alderman Lehman had said, your, your passion and excitement about this topic makes it a great process, so thank you. Item number 15, project status.
I think the only thing that I really want to impart to anybody who might be listening or listen to this later is due to the heat that we're going to have here over the next few days, that to have your garbage out there at 6:00 a.m., so that Groot can get out there and collect. I did it again, 5:00 a.m., thank you for reminding me, so that they can do the collection as early as possible. And then also, what Chief Maza was talking about yesterday, that the city hall is a cooling center and open 24 hours a day for people to come in and get a break from the heat, and that's in the police lobby area.
Thank you. Items.
I have a question for Laura.
Yes.
How is tomorrow's Route 31 meeting? What's the format of that? Is that where, I've seen where we have poster boards up.
Similar to other public hearings where, as you mentioned, we'll have, you know, storyboards up that show the different segments of the design. The meeting is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. about the road diet, and our consultant will also be here, and at about approximately 6:15, the consultant will give a presentation, and that will be an overview of what a road diet is and what, you know, the basics of that design are. And then thereafter, similar to other public meetings that we have, will be the opportunity to walk around to each of the boards and ask questions, make comments, and the consultant is going to be, you know, recording that information for us to present then to IDOT, because this is part of IDOT's process, is to have this public meeting, and then to share with IDOT the feedback that we received from the community as a result of that public meeting.
People show up at 7:00, that's not an issue either, they just won't hear that.
No, they just will have missed the presentation.
The presentation, but they can still like ask questions about.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll be here from 6:00 to 8:00.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Other.
Are we moving to other? No more questions, we're on other. Item 17.
Just moving things along.
Alderman Lehman.
Thank you. Do we have an update on the construction project at Prairie and Wilson? Gary?
It's going to be going back out to bid in November.
Yeah.
So that's the update, is where we're going to send it back out in November.
We got all the signatures and all the.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we were already out to bid once, and the bid prices came in too high, so we rejected them. So we're going out again in November, and fingers crossed.
Who else? All right, with that, item 17, somebody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion by Sulfur, second by Malay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Good night, Ellen and Dan.